Welcome, everybody, to the May 17th meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Merrimack Village District. I've got a statement to read. Due to COVID-19 and state of the emergency, public participation will be offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to a website address that is on the MBD agenda for this meeting. That agenda is on the mbdwater.org site. Or you can call 646-876-9923, enter webinar ID 86713489368, and use passcode 677137. As a courtesy, we'll be posted on their website, merrimacktv.com. And on Channel 20 typically also at a later date. And again, all of this information, the call-in numbers, if anybody wants to call in, and the the website address to go to for this Zoom meeting is posted on the agenda for today's meeting, which is on mbdwater.org website. So, welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order at 5:03 PM. And we can stand and take the pledge of allegiance. And we'll look for the MBD office to lead on that. Thanks.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, great. I know we have a lot to cover today. We'll just do a quick roll call of board members. Myself, Don Preventur, I'm from my home at 6 Warseman Heights. My son, Jordan, is in the room next to me. But that's not a problem. John?
John Lyons. I'm at my home at 25 Windsor Drive.
Thanks, John. Paul?
Paul McLaughlin. I'm at my home at 31 Peter Road. And as usual, my wife and daughter may be in and out of the room.
Right. And Wolf?
Wolf von Schoen, living at 4 Conservation Drive in Merrimack. I'm actually currently in Sanford, Maine, on my smartphone, and that's why I don't have the camera on, because it would make everybody seasick.
Okay. And we have staff over at the MBD office here in Merrimack.
Yep.
Great. All right. First on the agenda is the analysis of revenue and expenditures with Michelle Holton.
Having completed the month of April, we are 10 months into the year with 83.33% of the year complete. Our revenues at that time are at 80.7% of budgeted revenues, or 3.322 million. Our expenses are at 72.9%, or a little over 3 million with our net ordinary income for current fiscal year as of April 30th at $319,000. At the same time last year, the district was at 86.7% of budget for revenues and 73.8% of the expense budget with a net ordinary income of $496,000. So we have approximately $177,000 less in net ordinary income. At this time, we're continuing to see as far as the revenues go. We are still seeing the mercantile, commercial, school, and municipal be off. We did make an almost $13,000 adjustment to the revenues, unbilled revenues, accounting for that after reviewing where our May billing stood at that point. But the May billing would be for February, March, and April. So with the changes in the COVID restrictions and with the time of year, you know, we are hopeful that the remaining months of the year are gonna are gonna come in solid. So we'll keep monitoring that. The backflow revenue, I know we've mentioned, that's account 40412. We did have approximately 4,000 posted in April. We already posted over 14,000 in May, and that will continue on through these through these coming months. We did have the first part of the year for that testing that we obviously won't be able to make up, but we we have resumed resumed social normal operations as far as the backflow billing goes. We're still seeing the water usage in domestic mercantile and industrial be off, but our meter charges, hydrant and sprinkler are still exceeding our completion point of the fiscal year against budget so far. So those have been a strong point as far as the revenues to date. For expenses, we're doing, as we've mentioned before, we've identified some expenses that we do know we we will be under. Some other ones that we have flexibility if we spend them. So we're monitoring how the May billing finishes up. By the time we get into June, we'll be doing, the June billing is usually done around the 10th of the month, so we'll have those figures also. So we can assess those expenditures that have flexibility, whether they'll be made in this fiscal year or not. Does anyone have any specific questions on any revenue line items or expense line items? Okay. Then moving to the last page of the financials was the the bank balances. As I had mentioned last month, in the month of April, we had moved $448,000 to Capital Reserve per the annual meeting. In March, we also posted our well seven and eight iron and manganese water treatment plant SRF loan payment of $260,000. We then transferred back $250,000 each from that had gone from operating to Turkey Hill in 2378, while the projects were getting underway and we were getting the ACH payment set up with DES. So that $500,000 did go back to the operating account. And at the end of April, we were at 1.4 million in the operating account, and we'll have another $900,000 that's going to be requested. At the end of this week, I'm attending the trustee of trust funds meeting to request those funds from Capital Reserve, as well as give them some projections for the coming year for withdrawals that we we anticipate. So we should see those funds come back. It may not be all too operating, because some of it was from project-related items, but that should be coming back by the end of the fiscal year from the Capital Reserve. Does anyone have any questions on any of the bank balances or any of the transactions that I mentioned? Okay.
I'm good.
All right. Then the next item that had been requested was an update on the treasurer position. I'll be finishing up the job description tomorrow. I had a handful of questions for legal as far as how we proceed with the move to appointed regarding certain aspects of the process. So I'm going to be running that by them this week, and I would hope to have it posted by the end of this week, if not early next week. And I share it with with all of you, and then also how the process will play out going forward. Were there any specific questions that anyone had? And as we'd mentioned before, Kathy Stack, as a treasurer, has has been good enough to stay on in the position in the interim. So we've still been working together.
So what so what are the concrete steps to an appointed position?
We are allowed to post, just as we would for another position, another open position. I had some questions as far as what flexibility, and this question's for legal, if we were to have different options in how the job would move forward. Sometimes the treasurer position can have delegated duties. So if someone were to take on the full duties with no delegations, I didn't know if we had flexibility and what the stipend would be. So that's one thing I'm looking to talk with legal about. Then from there, we would receive in the applicant's resumes. They would be reviewed. They are normal. This is something I'm I'm looking for feedback on, but from the folks I've talked to who have done it, the process would be that the selected candidates would have interviews done actually in a public forum. So we would do it as part of our meetings. And then the discussion on the selection process would also be open.
So are we moving this to a paid employment position now?
No, it would still be a stipend. No, I'm still looking for it to be a stipend, but if we had, if we if we have someone who comes in and is able to complete all of the duties, is willing and able to do that, sometimes treasurer positions will will delegate, which is very normal. And people do it differently from community to community. So my question was just if we with one route or the other, are we able to say that the position would have a different stipend? If some of the duties are delegated to staff?
Yeah, yeah. It was one of the reasons why I wasn't a fan of that move in the first place, because this is, what kind of stipend are we talking about? Because, I mean, we're now trying to find people that are basically volunteers, right? Or maybe not, depending on what the answer to my question is. But they also need to.
$2,500 has been our current stipend, and that would be on the upper end of what we would of what we would be looking that someone would be able to, you know, fulfill the requirements of the position. And then in talking with the board, we can determine what duties we
Right.
are open to delegating. And then from there, that alternative stipend would be less.
And what did we pay in the last for this position?
It's been $2,500 for a number of years, for at least, I would say, at least the five years that.
So the treasurer's being paid more than the commissioner?
Currently, yes. And and actually, looking at communities throughout New Hampshire, it often is, but it's dependent on the degree of duties that they they specifically fulfill, as in deposit or daily deposit processing. Actually doing bank reconciliations versus reviewing bank reconciliations. There just can be a lot of variety in the actual hours that the job would require. There are communities that pay, we pay 2,500. There are some that pay four, five, there's even pushing eight and $9,000. But that person or that role has a requirement to do a different extent of the duties. There is flexibility in the RSA to be able to delegate. But I just wanted us to review our options there as far as if someone does the complete set of duties versus we allow them to to delegate certain duties, just so that there would be just more more equity in what is actually being performed for the role.
It's not gonna go, it's not gonna be more. It'll be less than what the stipend is now.
I wouldn't, I would state that. I, that's what I've been sort of detailing out the duties and trying to walk through if someone were to do all. So maybe even we have three options that a couple of things are delegated, or, you know, we can go to the full extent that things can be delegated. So we might have three. It's just something I've still been working through as far as the anticipated hours. And just as in all of you choosing to serve on the board, you know, it's something that people are doing as part of public service, so it should, well, of course, we want part of our doing this is wanting qualified people, but we still have people coming in with the spirit of public service. So we're not looking for it to to get into being anything more costly than what it has been to the district. And I think that we, with the range that we've had, and as we outline the actual duties, I think that we will be able to to get a qualified person willing and able to do the tasks that are required.
Okay.
So and once I, once I get some feedback from legal, and we sort of have an outline of what we can or doing, I can share it with everyone, just so that you can give me some feedback from there.
All right. Any other, any other questions for Michelle on any of this? All right. Looks good.
All right. Thank you.
I don't know if we're ready to move on to the next segment yet. Are we expecting Carrie to participate in this discussion?
Yeah, no, she's.
Because I know where the agenda calls for 5:30, and it's only 5:17 right now. So we we could move on to like minutes or something if we um if we have time.
Yeah, that's right. Give Carrie a call when he's done.
Okay. Because I think everything else, we're kind of waiting on Underwood and Emery and Garrett. So you guys want, we can move on to the minutes. Let's see, what do we have? Okay, let's see here. So Board of Commissioners to review minutes from, it looks like Carrie's on possibly now. Well, let's go ahead and do the minutes, I guess, since we already have everybody's attention on that, if you want. April 12, 2021, the special meeting. Let's see if anybody's got any questions on those. April 21st. April 12. I don't think I have any comments on those. Let's see. Does anybody have any comments on the April 12 minutes? If not, we could make a motion to accept them as written.
So move as a chair.
All right.
Second.
Great. All right. So we got motion by Paul McLaughlin and second by Wolf. So if no one has any corrections or comments to make on those, I'll call the vote by roll call. Motion to approve as written, the April 12, 2021 minutes. Paul, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Wolf?
In favor.
John? And myself, Don Preventur, in favor. So that's 400. No abstentions, no oppositions. All right, great. The next minutes we have are the April 19 regular meeting. And let me just see if I have any comments on those. Yeah, I think those are okay with myself. Anybody have any comments to offer on the April 19, 21, April 19, 2021, regular meeting?
It seemed like it took three days, but it was only one. I'm good with it.
All right. So you want a motion? Was that a motion to approve?
Sure.
Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Second by Wolf. All right. We'll do a roll call on that. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Wolf?
In favor.
Paul?
Vote aye.
And myself as well. So those passed 400. No abstentions, no oppositions. So the next minutes are the April 20, 2021 work session.
I have a question on that. On page four, yours truly suggested beginning work on a notification flyer sooner rather than later. And superintendent Minor suggested a bulk mailing with information as well. I don't recall if we created a task on our to-do list for that. And if we haven't, we should. Because the clock's ticking really, really fast on that one. In fact, we should probably talk about that later today as part of the rates. Does anybody know if that was added to the task list? I don't have that in front of me right now.
I think the task list is here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe it was, Wolf.
Yeah, if we could please add that, Amanda, that we need to immediately work on a notification regarding.
In the rate increase?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we might, but.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, the format setup and stuff from last time, so it's it is being worked on. It's just a need to have some numbers in there.
Yeah, just, and and we might. I just want to make sure this is in front of everybody real, real, real clear, because again, we have like a month, maybe two.
Right.
The thing is, we can't send it out until we have the second public hearing next month.
Right, sure.
All right. So there's really no modifications to those, right?
There isn't. There isn't. You're right. Well, I don't know if Amanda wanted to add that an action item has been created or would be created. Maybe we want to add that here to that line 2324. But other than that, I'm with that change. I would be okay with it.
All right. So were you saying to make a change or something to these minutes to reflect that? Or we can just have Amanda add that to the?
I don't guess they would be added to. Yeah, they would be added to today's minutes or something, I guess.
Okay.
Because we're only creating today the action item.
All right. I don't have any comments on those minutes. So if anybody else has any other comments or not, then we can have a motion to approve the April 20 minutes as printed.
I would move to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion by John, second by Wolf. So no other corrections, then we'll go by roll call. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Wolf?
In favor.
And Paul?
Extension.
All right. And myself, I'm in favor. So that's 301. No oppositions and Paul McLaughlin abstaining. All right. And let's see, the last one here, I think, is the May 4, 2021 non-public session. And I think on this one, if we have any corrections, we probably should do that in a non-public session. But if there are no corrections to this, we can approve those minutes in the public meeting here. I have no comments on those May 4 minutes, non-public. Anybody else have any corrections or comments to make on it? If not, can entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved. Oh, go ahead, John. Or Paul.
All right. So that was moved by Paul, second by Wolf?
I guess so. Yep, yep.
All right. So we'll do a roll call. Paul, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And Wolf?
In favor.
John?
Right for me.
And myself as well. So that's 400 with no extensions, no opposition for the May 4 non-public minutes. All right, good. So that closes out the minutes. I think we have Carrie available, so we could go on to the 5:30 agenda item. And that is a discussion at the request of Steve Larson to change the voting process to be in line with the town's voting process. So I guess that would mean that MBD would have, instead of having, we would be consistent with the town, and the voting would be on the same day as the town and the school district. There would be another ballot for MBD as well, I believe. I don't know if Carrie, if you have more background to present on this, by all means, please, please do. Thanks for joining the meeting.
Nice to see you all.
Yeah. And and I may, I should probably elaborate a little bit. So it was actually, it was actually relayed by Steve Larson. It was actually another citizen in town, Ray Drew, I think is the name, that relayed that question to through social media and Steve Larson making me aware of it, just to clarify that. And the question was made, why the MBD elections aren't happening at the same time as all the other elections in town at the same location? Just because it makes it easier for people to attend those elections on a wider scale and, you know, in bigger numbers. And I didn't really have a good argument against that, aside from the possible change of location. If these elections were to be held, you know, at an MBD-specified separate location. So really, to to make that work, and and not everybody may have that much time off from work during the week to to actually vote at two different locations. So the way really this would need to work is that, similar to the school district, the the water district would basically delegate some of the election logistics to the town and have its own staff and elected officials present to, you know, to monitor that everything goes according to MBD bylaws. And this is where I would gladly take over, turn over to Carrie for questions and comments, if this is something that's even feasible, or if this is a bad idea, or if we should be doing this.
Okay, great.
Okay. So in order to accomplish this, it would be a two-step process. The first step, you are authorized to do under the law, and I'll talk about that briefly. The second step, you are not. So the short answer is that you cannot do this legally. And I will explain why. The first step is to convert to a SB2, which is having the deliberative session where you can amend your articles first, and then having it on the ballot. That would be matching what the town and the school do. And you can do that. So RSA 4014 encompasses, it doesn't restrict just to towns. It encompasses village districts, the way it's written. Although I checked with my colleagues, we don't know of any village districts that use it. It certainly encompasses village districts, and therefore you could do that. You could have a deliberative where people come and amend the articles. And then you put it all of the articles on a ballot for voting. So you could do that piece. But in order to do that, you would have to, on your next warrant, put that to a vote to switch from how you're doing it now to doing it with a deliberative process. And obviously, that would have to pass. The second part of this, which is the bigger question from Wolf, is that can you match the town and the school election, right? So that when you go and vote with the town and you get the school ballot as well, and it's done conveniently, and everybody gets to vote at once. So you would get a lot more of the electorate. So initially, I found nothing that said that you can't do that. However, there's this obscure little law, 4014A, and that law specifically gives towns and school districts the authority to merge their elections essentially and their ballots. And because there's that law that says towns, and it says towns, it doesn't, you know, use the broad language of public entity that could incorporate you. It says town and school district. Because there's this law that specifically allows them to do it, and there is no such law that allows village districts to do it. As we know, we only have the authority that the legislature gives us. As we know, we only have the authority that the legislature gives us, we don't have any more or any less. Ultimately, it's my conclusion that because you don't have the specific authority that the schools have to merge with the town, you can't do that piece of it. And it's if you look, if you read forty, fourteen A, and this is on the public record, so folks can look at it, it is pretty explicit in saying. That legislature looked at this and decided they wanted to specifically allow towns and school districts to do it together. And for whatever reason, I that I don't know, and perhaps it was an oversight, or perhaps not, they did not choose to include village districts. So that's the answer, based on my review of the RSAs, is you don't have legal authority to do it.
And that's pretty black and white, and I really like that, I like black and white when it comes to them all, so. So in in other words, this is a state RSA that is outside of MBD control, right, it's not, it's not a bylaw, it's a state law that determines this. And excludes the village districts from that option, and because of that, it's even out of our. Reach to to make a change, except for possibly lobbying with the state to to include the list district in that law, correct?
Exactly, and I think you're exactly right, the way you put it, Wolf, and and that law that I cited forty, fourteen A. I think it honestly would be easy enough to add village districts in there, it would literally just be adding village district throughout. And it's a fairly short law, so I think that if that is something that wanted to be done in the future, I don't see what. Why there would be any reason not to, it would, particularly because many village districts don't encompass all of the voters the way you guys do. So you, it would, wouldn't really affect a whole bunch of, it wouldn't change a lot, it would benefit. You, if you wanted to use it, your voters would still have to approve it, of course. But um, yeah, that's the the long and short of it, you can't, you have no authority to do it, it's state law, unless that's changed.
Yep, that settles it pretty clearly, so. We should probably, in the minutes, have a brief summary of that, you know, clear and concise. So the commissioners can quote that when when we approach our constituents there.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great comment, Wolf, because I think we need to have something in the minutes so we can refer people to, and. I think that's a good, we've been, you know, we've been talking about this ever since the Warren Articles, when. You know, ninety-three percent of the voters came out in favor of it, and everybody said, yeah, but you only had three hundred voters. But that's the problem, so this was trying to get away to get to reach out to more voters on the same day that everybody's already voting for the town and the school district. So it's a good thought, and I had no idea that we were limited based on. The state laws, so that's kind of what we're asking.
We might be able to put something on our website as well when our frequently asked questions.
That would be an excellent idea, yeah, and it probably would be best if Carrie would write that up, actually.
Okay.
Already for 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 Ron and Jill, so I will just forward that along, I'll be ready to go.
Awesome.
Great.
Yeah, very nice, thank you, that that, I love it.
Any other questions or comments on this topic?
Well, to be, to, go ahead.
Said, no, that was, that was pretty simple and straightforward, so.
Well, I gotta be that guy, though, and ask a question to the commissioners. Well, yeah, I mean, people have been asking us a question, right, and we should be looking at it from all angles. Is this something we should bring forward to? You know, as a question, if there's any interest by our states, actually our town, they just, well, whatever. Town, state representatives, right, the American representatives. Is there something that we want to bring forward, to bring at least to the attention that this is the reality, and then we can see what they think about that?
It's not a bad idea, I mean, at least if if someone's willing to try and get a bill in to change that. According to what you were saying, Carrie, it would be simply just adding to that particular regulation that calls out for. Towns, school districts, just add village districts. To be able to be added together, to vote together.
Right, so the 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 same language appears in two RSAs. The forty, fourteen A, which governs the governments of. Public entities and town meetings, and then it also shows up in the election laws, six seventy-one, colon, twenty-six dash A. So they would, it would have to be addressed in both, but the language is nearly identical, addresses the same thing, so. But yeah, right now, it talks about. I mean, I'll read you the, just the pertinent phrase. The legislative body of a town and the school district may authorize coordination of town elections with the school district. Elections. To be held at the time and place determined by the election officials of the town, and the town election officials are the ones. As you were discussing, I think, Wolf, you mentioned this, they're the ones that run it. And that costs are allocated between the two, and as you know, many school districts and towns do this. So I don't see, I mean, there might be things that legislature, legislators have concern about or want to include. And maybe that's the reason why village districts weren't included in this, but. And so I can't answer that unequivocally, but it appears that. Village districts could be added into those laws to allow for that. I imagine it just wasn't considered, because most village districts don't encompass all of the voters. But I'm guessing on that, I don't know the reason for it not to be included.
That.
Actually, an interesting news that you just, and you mentioned that earlier, and I wanted to to actually touch, touch on that quick. So you're saying that other village districts are only including their customer base in the, in the. You know, authorized voters?
Right, so like, for example, in Rye, they have a Rye Water District, which is. A small portion of the town, and so only those folks within that district are voting on that, not the entire town.
That that is a whole separate discussion I would like to have after we close this one out. So.
About what?
Well, that is one, one thing that kind of bothered me quite a bit over the years, and other people have voiced that too. That town, townsfolk, basically, that are not on on public water, that are on the private well. That they can vote. For or against initiatives of the district, right, including the budget and so on, and officials, so. There's, there's a little bit of an imbalance there that that at least I see. So I wasn't realizing that other districts do not include none. Public water customers, non-district water customers. In the voting record.
Carrie, could you clarify, like in in Rye or some of the smaller village districts, even though it doesn't encompass the entire physical. Area of the town, could there be a private well? Citizen who is within that district, the water district, the village district, that is allowed to vote? Even though they are not on the water district's supply of water?
If they're in the district boundaries, yes, and my understanding. Right, it's like a defined area, and if you're within that area.
So it is, so Wolf, it is similar to our situation, but we encompass the entire town.
Well, we have.
It's not a matter of.
Not the entire town?
We do have franchise, no, we don't cover the whole town, we do have franchise area as well. It's. When the majority of the town, we, we actually do not service from Budweiser South to Nashville. That corridor between the highway. The interstate and the Merrimack River, that that corridor from Budweiser down, we do not service.
Okay.
But that's a small number of people, so. So what, maybe I didn't realize that either, so you're saying that, say, for example, in Rye, it's not just people that are. Owning property that is connected to. The public water system, our voters, but people within. The area that is covered by their service, even if they're on private wells, they, they're still allowed to vote. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
It's, it's feasible, I don't know the specifics, I don't live in that district, so I don't know if there are any. I don't know if that exists, for example, I don't know if that's what's actually happening, but for. Merrimack Village District, after talking with with Ron and Jill, it's my understanding that you're. The village district encompasses the entire town, and that you have all of the voters, that's the only reason why this even. Feasibly could have worked in the first place, whereas. Other village districts that are not even water districts, right, village districts occur for other reasons as well, so that's the other piece of this. And why it might not have included in the law in the first place, is because you can have zoning village districts that are just the district boundaries. You guys are unique, for several reasons, so.
But also, Carrie, you had said that not only would we have to have the legislature move forward with revising. These RSAs, but then also, we would have to have the vote to change to an SB two.
Correct.
It would be at least a two-year process basis to get there. Because, so we would have to have two elections, like, because basically, right, the first one on a state level to get that. RSA changed, and then. Our adaptation of it too, so it wouldn't be until.
That's the way you'd want to do it. You'd want the state law to change first before you moved to an SB two, because then you'd be in a position of having your ballot voting collection. Within a very, either on the same day or within a week of the town election. And which probably would garner you less voters. So you'd want to have the state law changed first, before you move to a deliberative.
Okay, and and again, the reason for me, while I'm, while I'm pursuing that idea is. The reason why we can't have the, you know, some of the warrant articles on the absentee ballots is because they can be amended on the floor. Right, and there's, there's a little bit of a dynamic to it that that some people like, right, because it gives. Voters a lot of power, right, and and a lot of influence, on the other end, a lot of people don't like it, because it can. Lead to some. You know, perceived fishy kind of, kind of sudden changes in in in. In in town, in in elections, right, and. So I would actually move forward and 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 suggest a motion to have staff, Ron. Approach the Merrimack State Representatives. And at least raise awareness that this is what the situation is like today. By quoting those RSAs and 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 our own bylaws in relationship to that, and. At least starting a discussion, you know, or offering a discussion that. This could, this could be changed on the state, on the state level to to allow more voter involvement.
I wouldn't be against that, I, I'm just wondering, is there any other thing that being subject to SB two? Would mean for us that we would have to change other processes around or anything?
It's, I mean, switching to SB two is a big change, your deadlines are going to be earlier. You'll have likely less people show up at the deliberative with control over amendments. But then poss- possibly more people showing up for the actual ballot vote. But the deadlines are different. They're going to be early year, because you're going to have your warrant out in time for the deliberative.
People aren't exactly storming the door for the, for 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 our hearings and so on, so I would be concerned about the attendance, to be honest. And earlier deadlines only, you know, are an organizational challenge, they really don't change anything other than that. So I wouldn't be worried about that personally.
I guess my only point is, before reaching out to the state reps and having them try to think about if they want to even tackle this as a bill or not. I'd want to make sure that MBD is willing to go forward with it, if the state reps that we ask are going to be willing to put in their effort. I think we ought to kind of make a decision whether we want to do that or not in the end, because if we decide we didn't want to do that. Then it doesn't make sense to bring it to the representative's attention, I think. So. I don't know, I don't, it almost seems like we need to, to find out a little bit more about what the pros and cons are about. Changing this and how much cost would be incurred to MBD on this? You know?
I agree, and Kristen just made a comment in the chat that I think is 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 very important, she says SB two also requires double budgets. Double the work, thank you for that comment, I think that's, that's fair. To 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 run that analysis, what is the value, what is the risk and the value of going to SB two? And I'm not, you know, just to say that, double the work. I'm not sure if that can be a reason to do or not to do that, for me, it would be legal exposure, right, or. You know, what does this change in terms of? What the district is as far as its organization, right, does it change anything as far as? Are we less eligible for grants, for example, right, or are we less eligible for for, you know, for for a number of things, right? Or maybe more eligible for it too, right, so we need to understand that part more, the additional work, while I appreciate Chris's comment very much. Wouldn't scare me, because again, this is about voter involvement, this is about getting people to get involved. And 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 telling the district what they want and what they don't want, and there's never anything bad about it. You know, it might be inconvenient at times, but but it's not, you know, it's what we want, right, and and we want to support in town for the things that we do. And and being disconnected from the other elections makes it always seem as if we're, as if we're not willing to listen. To people, right, as if we're not willing to engage with the voter. As as if we're trying to stay away from the, from the mass of voters that are like, that are voting for other things in town. And it's certainly, certainly the last thing that I personally would want to convey.
No, I I agree, it'd be nice if we could offer the same, you know. It's just more convenient for everybody to vote on the same day for everything that's really going on in the town, school, town and water. Do you want to have Carrie look into this more, do a list of pros and cons, I don't know where really where the next step is here?
I was gonna just say that maybe I'd change my, 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 my motion to say that I would like staff and legal. To 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 prepare a pros and cons of going to SB two. And based on that, we can continue that discussion.
One thing I would like to look at a little bit is what the population is. On that end of town. Because that, now that you're bringing up a point, Carrie, with. You know, we do have a franchise area in that area, and that area is growing, so that would be potentially. I don't know how many great residents that will never be on our water. That could impact the decision for the rest of the system as well. So that might be something to consider.
But isn't it true today?
Not yet.
Well, it is, but what I don't think we're getting, it is true, but I don't think we're seeing. We're not, definitely, we're not seeing the numbers come to vote, so it's probably not affecting us, but if it is at a town election. That could possibly affect it.
Well, but those people are Merrimack residents, right? Just not MBD customers.
Registered voters.
They are. That's right, they're, and that's a better way to put it, they're registered voters, correct, so why would that not be the same today as it is? If it were as part of the town elections, just because they they possibly show up in larger numbers, but that's true for hopefully the rest of town too. And with the rest of town being the bigger portion of the population, you would think the, you know, on the, on average, it should increase. The influence of the town over those smaller areas.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mean it negatively either, it's, so they're not, they're not. Coming out to our elect, our elections, because they're not serviced by us, but if they're going to a town for a, a election with a, with a ballot or. For town and the school board. And they grab a budget, did, our, our ballot, now they're looking at something that they're going to. Potentially vote on, that they wouldn't have in the past, because they're not. Where they could have come to our, our meeting and voted, they they haven't been, I, I, that's a really point.
Right, but I think the the same is true for the rest of town too. What you're basically saying is now, you know, if we want to make that change, we're rubbing the ballot into their face, right? But but the same is true for everybody else showing up with the. But but the same is true for everybody else showing up for the election, right? And with with the rest of the town being the larger portion of town, you would think that it actually increases the influence the larger portion of town has in general over the over 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 the MBD, right? Over the election.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right, so um was that a motion from Wolf to have Carrie and staff just, I guess, do a list of pros and cons on going to SB two? Um I'll second that just for, because I agree, it's something, you know, we could look into at least to have a list of things where what it affects. The the pros and cons, I guess. So if anyone else has any comments, go ahead, Wolf.
Yeah, and it needs to cover like, you know, like I said, risks of exposure. Um does it change anything with the whole PFAS situation? Does it change anything with the settlement agreement? And I know that, you know, succession succession organizations were listed in there, but um you know, we have we got to understand all all angles of it. So um researching that part first makes a lot of sense, but it has to be a comprehensive research.
And do you want to put a monetary value on it? Or Carrie, do you want to estimate that cost first of what it would take to um put that together? Um usually when we do a motion, we have to say, you know, how much how much money we're willing to spend on or something. So that's why I'm just wondering what's the easiest way to get there.
Under an hour.
What was that?
It will take under an hour.
Oh, all right. Well, that's fine then. So definitely less than a few hundred dollars to do that. Then that's fine. If everybody's all right with that, I can call the motion if that's um simple enough. No other comments, then um yeah, I'll do that. Uh let's do a a roll call. Uh Wolf, how do you vote on that?
In favor.
And myself, I'm in favor. Paul, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
John?
Sure.
All right. All right. So that's four zero zero, no abstentions, no opposition. So um yeah, Carrie, go ahead and spend that hour and give us a list of pros and cons and we'll um take this up at another future meetings. Sound good. All right.
Thanks for allowing me to hijack that and throw that in the mix.
No problem. I think, was there anything else, Carrie? I think that was all that I think you were on the agenda for. So I don't know if you have anything else for us real briefly or not, then um we could let you go.
Not at this time.
All right. Thanks for your help. Thanks for being present. We'll catch you on the next one. All right, great. Let's move along. We'll go next with um an update from uh Jamie Emery regarding well nine pump tests and a change order. How you doing, Jamie?
Good, good. Good to see you guys tonight. Um so I think essentially all still is good news. Um we have approvals now from DES essentially for everything that we need to do for the pump test. Only thing we're waiting on is now we'll have to get the response back from the from the homeowners. We sent out uh letters to, I think, twelve or thirteen. We had we by required by law to do everyone uh within the thousand-foot radius, plus we had some on the outside of the one thousand-foot radius, but we'll see if we get any responses. Barry, I spoke to Barry today. He uh thinks he's probably two weeks away from being ready for us to do this pumping test, maybe three. Uh he's got, he still has the well and pump, uh the pump and well two. Ron, he told me today that that pump, the impellers in that pump were really bad. I guess you already know that. Um he's got a or he's ordered the pump, right? And that's going to be re- he hopes to get it in the next ten days. Is that correct?
It's uh when I talked to him on Friday, it was a uh three to five day build. I gave him the okay. Um he got confirmation today or an email today saying delivery of uh Wednesday. Or it'll be probably shipped out probably Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, next Wednesday or this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Okay, good. Well, that's better than when I spoke to him this morning. It's good.
Yeah, so just um just, I don't know if anybody else knows, but um Ron had called me last week, well, two. They were cleaning the screen. That went well. I guess the screen's nice and clean, but when they um looked at the pump and colors, uh they were shaved down very, you know. I guess the word corroded or just used.
It's corro- corroded very thin, yeah.
Right. Now that pump is old, I guess it wasn't, that pump's been in place since that well was installed in two thousand and four. So that's a seventeen-year-old pump. I'm surprised it lasts that long, actually.
Yeah.
But the issue is we're out of well two for at least two weeks, most likely, right? And right now, going into Memorial Day. So deja vu all over again from last year.
Yeah. Well, and for me, from the pumping test perspective, it's not what I wanted to see. And I wanted to see stabilization and draw, you know, drawdown from well two, so we get the you get the act for rising up as a result of not pumping it, you know, or we won't be pumping it. So have to deal with that because I don't want to. We're gonna have to. That'll be somewhat of an interference with us as we reverse. So I want to put the well back online for at least a little while to get the water table back down. Uh we were out gauging today on the stream and um one of the things that's interesting, maybe I'll share this with you. Can I? Am I allowed to share? I guess I can. I'm gonna share this. Uh you have to give it up, um Jill.
I am looking at you.
Anyways, the well doing that uh so the water that's coming out of Green's Pond is kind of erratic and and uh and I think that has to do with the way the the water is being released out of that, but right now.
You're all set, Jamie, if you wanted to put something up. There you go.
So right now you have we're gauging. We've installed per the letter, we've installed more gauging stations. We got one here at SW one. SW one. And the water comes out of Green's Pond and there's a little gravel pit near where this uh power line crosses east to west. That water dives down into the ground and disappears. And then it shows up again over here where the wetland begins again. And that's where we're at right now. Now where we come to um pull this down a little bit. You come all the way out here, there's a lot of water in the wetlands up in this region and everything that you see here is is underwater right now. So um it's very different than what we had, if you remember, had viewed uh before when we were last summer, everything was dry. You could walk across that wetland. There was nothing there. So that's going to be a challenging uh in, it's going to be challenging as we go into this pumping test. But right now, we are tentatively scheduled to do the pump test either the week start, the week of the seventh, June seventh, or the week of the fourteenth. Um it all does is a bit contingent upon uh well two and getting that back in operational. It's um we got a Barry's still got a, he's pulling the casing out of well number nine. And then we've got the pipe. We're bringing the pipe over to lay out between um between the MBD two and the area that we're going to be discharging. And then Ron is going to be laying out the twelve-inch pipe that came in on Monday, right, Ron? That came in.
It's on site today.
Yeah. So your plan is this week to to start putting that out?
Start tomorrow.
Yeah, good. So we're, you know, our ducks are pretty much in order. Uh our monitoring is all begun. We've already started it all. Uh I went ahead and we've already started the wetlands inventory. The field work is done out there on the wetlands inventory. Uh so I just went ahead, even though the change order is before you tonight, I've already started the process. If you decided not to do it, then I just have to eat it, but I've I've made it a part of this process. Um so I don't know if there's any um any other uh comments. I think the DES is is pretty much ready uh that, you know, gone through a lot of discussion here. So now it's just about about the weather cooperating. What would be really nice if this DES would allow it, but it won't happen because it really won't those wells operating simultaneously is to bypass MBD and pump this into the system. But we had that conversation, as you remember, um last meeting. And uh I think we've we've all come to the conclusion, and rightly so, that we've got to have this pumping simultaneously. So it would change a lot of direction. It would be too much pivoting for the DES right now. So I don't know if you have any questions, but that's pretty much all I had to share tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for uh Jamie? All right. Um Jamie, the only the only comment I wanted to make was um when you talked about the the fluctuation of water coming out of Green Pond, the lot of that is actually due to Natticoop Lake. Because I know for a fact that there is, there's a beaver that dams up the outlet of Natticoop Lake. And quite often, I'm always riding my bike or walking through the segment of Natticoop Brook between Green Pond and Natticoop Lake. Sometimes that brook is roaring and sometimes it's just barely a trickle. And every time it's just a trickle, I get up to the outlet of the weir at um Natticoop Lake. And it's just chock full of logs and sticks and stuff. And then the town comes and cleans that out. And all the water comes out, then it fills up Green's Pond. So you get that kind of dynamic going on. That's that's going to be a little tricky to try to maintain.
It is.
Condition out there with that going on.
It is going to be tricky. And we also have that. That's a good point, Don. And then we also have something going on down here. If you can see in the northeast, we think there's probably some beaver dams up here that's backed this up a little bit. Um and the guys are going to go back out there and look, but I don't know, Ron, if in your travels out there, if you've seen any beaver dam activity in the northeast here.
Um I believe there is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, whenever we call the town and ask them about um about clearing out the beaver dams, they actually go from Natticoop all the way down and back. They walk the entire stream to see what they can come up with.
Well, to Don's point, I think if we were able to um have the town go out there in the next, you know, maybe once a week over the next three weeks to see if they could clean, you know, keep those clear so the water is draining through. Um that may be helpful, at least one time um to go out there and see if they can drain some of these. Otherwise, we're going to be which is okay. We're going to be pumping against an artificial head that's going to be um or will be monitoring an artificial head that will be established by the beaver dams. Um it's not the first time we've had to go that route, but I would prefer if we could get those to be released um as as they would. Now, I it seemed like, Don, I don't know, that when they released the beaver dam up at near Natticoop Brook, they're doing that on a regular basis, like every week or something. Because we're seeing a lot of variation.
I wouldn't say. I think it's more on like maybe once a month because um and and I've seen Natticoop Lake change elevation by a good six inches depending on how much debris is in that. Uh so there's an outlet weir. It's about five or six feet long and it's got a board. You know, and that controls the lake, but the beaver dam, the beaver stacks up debris much higher than that. It almost totally covers the outlet sometimes. And I I've called actually the town maybe two or three times in the last, I don't know, ten fifteen years just to say, hey, it looks like it's backing up. And you know, if I know rain's coming, just to make sure somebody's not, you know, ignoring it and uh we, you know, we wouldn't want that dam to overflow and go around the spillway in a road or anything. So um but I from just being out there, you know, it looks like I would, I you could probably ask Kyle, but I would say probably less than once a month, I think they're out at that lake cleaning that up, maybe three weeks from from what I've seen.
Yeah.
I don't really know for sure.
So Ron, just so you know too, one thing we're going to be starting, I think the this, I know this week that they're going to start bringing the pipe over that we're going to use.
Okay.
Run. So one of the things we're going to donate, I have two thousand feet of pipe or close to it. Then we're just going to donate to the MBD to use. We're not going to rent it or anything. Uh but we are going to also provide some assistance in putting it down, um laying it out, getting, you know, crew out there and you know, um Ron, I I'm assuming that you'll be able to provide at least someone to give us a little bit of assistance on that too.
Yeah, I was actually planning on, I thought we were going to be helping out as well anyways. So I, yes.
Okay. It's going to take us to get in there because we're going to have to pick the root. Uh make sure that our root is going to be acceptable. And that's why the wetland, I had to get in there and deal with trying to understand the wetlands up there too, so.
So you have you have two thousand feet. Does Barry have any pipe as well?
Well, we're going a thousand and a thousand, so it's
We have enough then. Okay, I was thinking it was like fifteen hundred feet or something like that.
Yeah, no, well, it's a thousand feet is where we're going. We're going to split it into two. Where I need a lot of your help is to fuse the the pipe that we're the twelve-inch to the six-inch the two and put it, put a um a V there, you know, or Y rather. So we can, you know, we can, we can come out and join the two two uh lines.
Yep, that was all taken. Yeah, we should be quick connects on that. It should be.
Hopefully it'll be easy.
I yeah, I was, it should be easy. I was gonna not say that just in case, but.
It's never easy. Let me tell you, it's never easy. So um anyways, that's pretty much where we're at. We still, you know, we got a little bit of um work to do on our end, but uh we're we're pretty close. We're we're wait for the uh, I don't know the exact date when the monitoring well people or the monitoring well letters have to be responded, but I think it's in ten days.
Yeah, I was going to ask what what day, what's the deadline for responses from the private well owners?
I think it's in the next ten days. I don't have the exact date, but it before June seventh.
How are we going to monitor those wells? Are we putting transducers in those wells or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if they allow us and if they exist.
Right. So do you have to come back and get a change order to do that work?
No, this is included. It kind of is as my, I'm assuming we've got a number of them that we're going to have to do. So
Okay.
So I'm not planning on coming back again. I just put it, put in the change order for what I think is going to have to happen. And well, a lot of the work is is, you know, getting this, we have to mail merge and put put the letters together and get them out, but those are done as far as I know.
So they're about twelve or thirteen?
I think so, something like that, yeah.
Okay. So I don't, I just thought this change order you were referring to wasn't in our package. It was just emailed.
Yeah, my my fault entirely.
No, that that's fine. I just wanted to point out to the commissioners about that, if case you're not knowing what we're talking about.
I had to get the wetlands prices and I was waiting on that.
Right. So this says um add task seven, which is wetland review and inventory flora and fauna assessment, burn pool assessment, fifty-two hundred dollars. Is that something the DES asked for in addition? Was that what you?
Yeah, it's one of the things they had. Yep. They wanted to get a a better sense of the wetlands out there.
Okay.
And being part of our response too, I'm sure that that's going to be part of the issue when the comments come in. So yeah, kind of nipping it ahead of the time too is part of it.
Um and then you got a task eight is a response to DES regarding the pump test approval, including certified mailings.
Yeah.
Well, property owners within a thousand feet of them says from MBD seven, but that should be nine.
It should be nine, sorry, yeah.
All right. And that was for forty-two hundred dollars.
That was the report too. That included the letter report that we sent out that you saw. You know, we wrote our response back to the state. They actually asked for a written formal report. Usually they don't. So we were kind of surprised that they wanted a written formal response this time. And I think it's partly because of the issues in Hampstead. That kind of blew up on DES. Um I don't, we'll go into all the details, but there was a significant amount of angst that got expressed by a group of people, citizens group that they didn't have. You know, there was conversations, but there wasn't a written not on us, this is somebody else. But uh we end up coming and cleaning it up afterwards. But um so anyways, we wrote a four-page document with figures and tables and so forth. And so that's part of that forty-two hundred. So that's all.
Task nine is to provide additional assistance laying out discharge pipe for the pump tests.
Yeah.
And that's four thousand dollars?
That's right. Yeah, that's what I put in this estimate.
So the total change order is for thirteen thousand four hundred?
Yeah.
Um and that is um what are we doing here? I don't know. Does everybody have a copy of this? I don't know, does everybody have a copy of this or should we put this on the screen or something or?
I could put it on the screen.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
I did email it to all the commissioners and Amanda.
You see that?
Yeah.
And that, so that just, so the total change order would be thirteen thousand four.
And I guess this is work that. Even though those twelve or thirteen homes weren't initially included, that's all work that would have been done. In the task and would have been costed out, I guess.
Right, we didn't, we didn't know what we would have to do, so yeah, that's, that's what it is, yeah.
Okay. So I don't know if anybody has any other questions on that, or if not, then we can talk about a. Putting up a motion for this. Addendum, change order.
Don, I just wanted to point out that the funds for this is, will be out of the new well fund. As well.
Okay. Anybody have questions, comments, or? Do we want to entertain this motion?
Make the motion to approve the change order on this. Seems reasonable to me.
Okay. So that would be in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred, change order number two by Emery and Garrett, May seventeen, twenty twenty-one. With funds to come out of the. What did you call the new well fund?
Yes.
Okay, so motion by John.
I'll second that.
Second by Paul. Any other questions? If not, we can go through roll call. All right, see you none, John, how do you vote?
Hi.
And Paul?
I vote I.
Wolf?
In favor.
And I'm in favor myself, so I appreciate that, that's four zero zero, no opposition, no abstentions. And like I said, you know, all of this would have been, if it was known ahead of time, I'm sure it would have been factored into the scope of work. So, you know, it is what it is, so. I agree with that. All right, so that's good, so you get to get moving on that. So anything else you need from us to help facilitate this?
No, I just wanna let you know that I will not be around in the next board meeting next in June. So I'd be, I'd be around, I'm not, I'm gonna be away, so I wouldn't be able to be on the, in the meeting. That I, at this particular point in time. But if we need to have a written, you know, summary to you about what we need, or I'll have Dan Tinkum. You know, get and be available to talk.
So you're gonna be away during the pump tests, is Dan gonna be around?
Yeah, well, I'm leaving, Dan will be around, but I'll be available, but I'm, I'll be away on the weekend that, that. Whenever that Monday is. June, yeah, whatever that Monday is, I know I'm gone that June, that June fourth, the third week, third Monday in June.
Okay.
But that should be the pump test, if we start on the fourteenth, I'll be around for that startup and I'll be in communication with Dan every day.
All right, now I'm just curious if there's any decisions or anything that needs to be made about. I, I, I do pump tests a lot and a lot of times you have to make a decision, something go in the middle of it.
Every moment, I just, I, I just may not be on the virtual meeting part.
Okay.
But I'll be, no, I'll be, I'll be with Dan every day, so.
You still be in communication, basically?
Totally, one hundred percent, yeah.
All right, okay, that's good to know. Wanted to make sure we had a master hemming the, manning the wheel here.
I don't want this to go sideways.
No, we don't either.
So.
Okay.
Think I'm good then, I don't think I need, Keith and Peter, do you need me or John, do you need me for the next piece?
I don't think so, I don't know if there's anything else.
I don't, I know it doesn't probably, I think we just talked about infrastructure and rates, you're welcome to listen into the rates hearing.
I'm good without that.
I, I did have a question for Jamie, I didn't get a chance to talk to him today, but you had actually asked about the Brownfield letter as well?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
I did talk to Paul McCally and it's gonna be on the agenda for the. And I wrote it down, I can't find it, I'm not seeing it. The eleventh, it is, it looks like two scribbles, June eleventh.
Okay.
Right? Yes, that's a Friday, so it'd be the tenth.
And that's a virtual meeting?
No, I think that's in person, right?
They're, they're in person, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I'm wondering if, if they had questions, I could, you know, it'd be probably okay to be attending that virtually or. Maybe Don wants to attend that virtually or somebody from the M V D probably, Ron, you know, someone just to. Push it along in case it needs a little kick.
Okay, I can inquire with Paul if that's something, if, I believe they can do a, a virtual meeting there as well.
What day is the eleventh?
Thursday, it's the second. It's the second Thursday.
Oh, second Thursday.
Yeah.
That would be the tenth, I think.
I think all their meetings are on Thursdays.
It's the second and third, second and fourth, I believe.
Okay. Tenth, I'm sorry, June tenth is Thursday.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll leave it up to you, I mean, Don, you might, I mean, you know a lot about it too, it's up to you, I'm, I'm there to help you if I can.
Yeah, I almost kind of feel like we should probably have some kind of presence at the meeting just to kind of explain it. I don't know if we'll be able, I'll be able to answer all the questions personally, but. I could probably plan on being available, I guess, at that meeting if. Why don't you, why don't you talk to Paul and see if, if there's questions on it? What, Jamie, is there a sense of urgency to get that letter in? I'm just thinking if, if they don't approve it, if they, if there's too many questions, they're not comfortable or whatever, then. You know, and we put it off for two weeks, what, what's the deadline on getting something into the state?
There's no deadline, but I think, you know, what we want, we wanna do is get a state to recognize we have interest. And so there's no deadline, but I, you know, it's just a matter of letting them know that. And they really don't get interested unless there's a recognized interest by the governing body. To be a participant, so.
Yeah.
Once that gets going, and I think they can, I mean, really, all we want this town to say is we are interested. Can, even if we say we're interested conditionally until we learn more. You know, that's, that's fine too.
Right, and I guess that's the thing is we still have the option in the future of rejecting anything.
Totally.
Right, okay.
We, we have control, control of it, so.
And I heard on W M U R, I don't know, a week ago, there were a couple of brownfields grants awarded to a couple of small water systems in New Hampshire, is that? Is this like their, their allocation for the year or?
No, they have alloc, the way I understand it, they have some money allocated for this site. They just need to, they just need to know whether we're in.
All right.
Yeah.
I can reach out to Paul, see what, if they have any questions or not.
And if it can be done virtually, that'd be better, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Great, well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Sure.
Have a good week. Thanks, Jerry. Bye.
All right, so moving along. We got Underwood Engineers talk about a multitude of projects. So I'll turn it over to you guys, whichever one you want to start with.
Pete's gonna start with.
I'll start.
Project updates, yeah, for our seven and eight anyway.
Yeah. I'm gonna leave my, my camera off if you don't mind, cause I'm, I'm at home and my wifi is not as strong as I'd like to. So I just wanna just do that, just to make sure my voice comes through.
And I'll leave my camera on so you can look at me and pretend I'm talking, but. It's also wanted to mention, for those of you who don't know, Katie Canelo is on the line and she's an Underwood, Underwood. Employee who helped with some of the other things, so she's listening in, so that's who that is.
Okay.
So M V D seven, eight project. The contractor has done a real good job, as I mentioned at the last one, he's continued to do that to get as much work done as he can until the vessels come. The vessels were scheduled to be delivered on June seventh. However, the contract of the, the Evoqua. Only had one truck available to shuffle the vessels. So what they have done is they're actually pushed up the schedule a little bit, so one of the vessels is gonna be delivered the week of May twenty-fourth. And then the second one, then he's gonna drive back, pick up the second one, then come, and then so then that one's gonna be delivered. The week of June seventh, so roughly the schedule is the same, but instead of the vessels coming together, they're coming separate. But, you know, they're still gonna be placed at the same time and, and the contractor is gonna still have the same schedule of closing in the roof right after that, so.
You're gonna have to keep the crane there longer, is that gonna come back on us for that?
Nope, it's gonna, that's, it will, it will be an extra cost on that, and I imagine the contractor is gonna just turn around and. Try to backcharge Evoqua on that one, that's all, that's all in his, you know, his, his dealing, so. We don't get into any of that scheduling or any of that, so that would definitely not be a cost to you. It's, it's in a workings between those two. Yeah, so that's just kind of a quick summary there, so everything looks good, nothing's really changed on that one, which is good. Just a quick summary on M V D two, I know it's not on your schedule, but I just wanna give you a quick update on that. So the environmental review came back, I don't know if you remember that we were able to award the project to. Kinsman, but we were not able to sign a contract until the environmental review came back on that, okay? So we awarded the contract to Kinsman, gave him the ten thousand dollars as an advanced payment. So they can, you know, forward that off to Evoqua, so Evoqua could start the shop drawing process. That all occurred, and then in last week, the environmental review comment period expired. And they came back with no comments, so then we are, you know, able to now move ahead with contract signing. So I'm, I'm talking to Kinsman to try to figure out a time to do that. One thing that is. Possibly affect, we can sign it at any time, but their start time. The contractor is trying to coordinate when he thinks he's gonna get vessel delivery and then back up his schedule from there. So he might not be starting to the end of June, early July, depending on when the shop drawings come back. Or gets submitted. I just received an update today on that because we requested updates from them weekly on the process of the shop drawings. The shop drawings are greater than fifty percent and they intend to submit those before. Memorial Day, so the end of May, so it'll be before the end of next week. One thing that they did put on there as a sort of a caveat, they said that they would not release the shop drawings. Until they have a firm contract with Kinsman on that, so Kinsman is trying to work through. Some of the details of the purchase order, and one of the things that also came in, they sent in a preliminary. Bed life warranty and it is less than what we had in the, in the specifications. And we have a meeting with them tomorrow to discuss that and, and some of the reasonings why. So. That's kind of an update there.
And that's with Evoqua, you mean, Peter, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. You may want to mention, I don't know if the, the board is aware, that they also said that they would turn around. Those shop drawings without having a contract signed.
Yeah, they did, yeah, they did say that, you know, and, and that was that, you know, when we were going through the bidding phases and stuff. They, you know. And when we approved, you know, the, the board approved, you know, that advanced payment of ten thousand dollars. When I did talk to Evoqua, they said, oh, as long as you. Adjust the payment, so, so we had certain percentages that they would get paid, so at a purchase order, they would get paid a certain amount. When shop drawings got approved, they got a certain amount. And vessel delivery, they got a certain amount, then the rest of it, they would get at the, you know, when it was all started up. So they just wanted five percent more to be swung from approved. Shop drawings to when the purchase order was signed, and they, they said that they would, you know, start the shop drawings right then. I'm not sure if they exactly did that, but they are working on them right now, so, you know, I don't. I don't, you know. Some of the things I, I guess we get out of them is, you know, I'm not, I don't know, I don't wanna say that. I guess I'll just leave it as that, we're, some of the things we're not sure about, what they're saying, so.
Very.
But that's, that's where we stand right now, so it, it might be coming down to the same issue that we had with. Well, seven and eight with the bed life warranty being reduced. I know we had discussions about that with seven and eight, and I, and I think we kind of came to the conclusion that, you know. Bed life warranty has some, you know. Dollar values to it, but it's really not a whole heck of a lot compared to the size of the project. So.
Okay. Any questions?
A quick update on those two.
Any questions, anybody on that? If not, I guess, go ahead, John, you got something?
No, I was just gonna say no.
Okay. All right. So we can move on, what's next, the Wells four and five media change out?
Yeah, and. Don't have much more to update you, except that we've provided you with some trend charts to start giving you a better representation of what. You're seeing for P fast as it passes through the lead vessel to help in the decision making. I'd be happy to go through them if you'd like, they should be in your packet.
Yeah, I got, we've got the. Looks like an email on May thirteen.
Yeah. And I, you know, I, it's, I think it's a good way to. Represent what we're seeing in the media beds. So that as we decide and Ron and his guys decide what, what they want to do, I can, I can call it up real quick and show it to you if you want. And the other thing I was gonna ask, Don, I, I know you run a, a schedule for a public hearing. So I was just gonna see, see what you wanted to do in terms of the agenda items that are in front of us.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we definitely need to go over. Yeah, we should get to that probably next, actually. So we do have a public hearing on the rate increase at seven and we gotta figure out what we're doing for that, so. Good point, Keith, I guess we can. Move on to, I guess that would be the master plan update. That, or the, is that included in the rate increase or that's a separate item here, I'm trying to see what's going on?
Yeah, and I, and I'm not trying to say we don't need to go over, if you, if you want to, we can, or we could pick another meeting. I think with the master plan report, you've seen a lot of the initial findings, so what's been presented is upon a report, I don't think just much. You know, we accommodated revisions that you did make. And we can certainly go over it now, or we can try to, you want to defer it to a future meeting, I, I just, I just wanna make sure you have time to get into the rates, knowing that there's a rate hearing. So whatever you wanna do, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we should do that next, for sure. I do want, I don't wanna, I, I'd wanna bring back the corrosion control report and the master plan update. If not at this meeting, then at some point in the future anyway, so. Since we have the public hearing at seven, I'd say we go ahead and talk about rates now. So. Yeah, so you've sent in the packet here, what we have. Looks like you got a sample water bills, existing rates compared to alternatives, so let's. Give us kind of the long and short of this, I guess.
Yeah, and, and if you'd like, I can share the screen in a moment, but I'll give you the, the long and the short of it. You know, Megan and I did come and speak to you at the work session and you guys, we all debated on what we'd like to do and where we thought we could land. And it was really. And it was really, the discussion, as you recall, was focusing around how we were going to tier the rates and how much. And we all agreed, I think, in concept that we wanted to tier the rates so we could begin the, the discussion of a tiered structure that would support conservation and deliver the right message. But at the same time, keep it modest, so that, you know, we could adjust it or make the tier structure a little bit more aggressive with more experience. So that we wouldn't impact various user classes too differently. Because if you recall, if we made the tiered gaps, the gap between the tier one and a tier two, too big, then the larger users were starting to get hit. So we went back and recalculated a tier structure based on a 10% difference between tier one and tier two. And and ran those numbers. So that's what's in front of you. And we also had debated at our last meeting about whether or not we should do a 9% or 22% rate, rate increase. So we also went through and looked at that and spoke with staff. And we, on the email that I think you're referring to, Dawn, we made a recommendation that we think you need to do the, we, we suggest you do the 22% rate increase now. And that you start with a tiered rate structure of 3,000 cubic feet per quarter. And then the tier would go up 10% if people exceed that. Or if, if users exceed that.
Is that on average day in gallons? The gallons per day?
It is. Believe it is. Pretty sure I have that here.
Yeah, how much did you say it was for?
3,000 cubic feet per quarter. Let me just run it for you, because
So divided by ninety days.
About 250. So it's, it's 250 gallons a day. So it's, it's above your average domestic user. So your average domestic user would not see a tiered, would not bump into the tiered.
If I remember back to the warrant articles, wasn't the, the average day demand like 315 or something gallons per day or?
I think we're using in Merrimack 206. Which is high. I mean, typically over most of the communities, we do rate work. It's in the low hundreds, 110, 20, 30, maybe even 150, but 206 is pretty high.
Oh, yeah. So that's why you're saying this number is above that.
It's above your, it's above Merrimack's average domestic user. So 250. And the rates we're suggesting is tier one. Your would stay, would be, go from 232, which is your current rate to 283 per hundred. And then the tier two, when you exceed that 3,000, it would jump to 311, $3.11 per hundred. Your meter charge for a 5/8 three quarters would go from 64 to 78. These are all 22% bumps. These are all 22% bumps. And the hydrant charge would go from 78 to 95. And what I want to show you here, I'll share my screen. This is the what this is, is the rate presentation we did back in when we voted on the warrant articles. And we had we had estimated at that time and presented at that time to 13% increases, both basically to catch up with non, non PFAS stuff, budgets, Turkey Hill, some other debt that was hitting. And then, and then we estimated a 40% rate increase for 2022 to deal with the PFAS related. What we're, what I think we did so far is we've done 9%. I think it was FY 2020. We didn't do anything last year.
It was nineteen, right?
Yep, it's seven, one, nineteen.
Okay, nineteen. Yeah, I was going off memory. And that's what, that's what happens when I do that. So it would be so, and then, and then we didn't do anything after that. So, and, and so we were targeting a 26% increase over two years, plus or minus. We only did nineteen. Then we did zero. And then we were going to do forty. So what we're suggesting is to do the, do 22% now, knowing that it's less than what you need. Quite a bit, we think. And then we would balance, figure out what the balance is at a later date. So this would be equivalent to 19%. Forty-five percent increase. So we would be capturing 45% of the increase of these, of what we anticipated to be 79% by doing this. So i- if our estimates two years ago were correct, we'd still be facing another 30% increase. So our, our point is to, to try to spread that out and do, do the 22% now and establish the subtle tiered rate structure that we talked about. And you're still, you're still, we're still setting rates that are less than what we, we thought. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, we got debt service that's going to hit later than we thought. And we got a little bit of grant. But we also, that we didn't know about back then. And then, but we also know O and M is going, potentially going to be a little higher depending on the GAC frequency. So we think a 9% rate increase is too low. It would hit you too hard later.
Did, did I hear you just say that you thought the 22% increase was even less than we need as well?
Oh, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna be getting another bump when the debt service hits. You're gonna need more. Right? So what we're saying is if you do the night, we did the 19% in 2020. We're recommended 22% right now. That's equivalent to a 45% increase cumulative, accumulated. Back, back two years ago, we were projecting at the end of the day, after all the PFAS was built and all the PFAS was operating, we were projecting a 79% rate increase. So I'm saying you're only just over half of where we thought you would be by doing the 22%.
But it's still more to go.
There's going to be more to go. There's going to be more to go.
All right.
But if you do nine, that more to go is going to be very big. So by doing the 22, we're split, you know, we're starting to capture more.
Right. Okay. So basically, so the answer is the, the base rate increase, I'm calling it the base rate, 22%. Then the tier for usage over 250 gallons a day on average over a quarter is that it would be an additional 10% on top of that. Just, just for the, the amount over the 250 gallons a day.
Yeah. Okay, maybe the simplest way to, to do it is that you're, the rate is going to go up from 232 to 283. And then if you exceed 3,000 per quarter, the rate's going to go up another 10% for anything over 3,000. That's 311. And then the meter and hydrant charges will both go up 22% as well.
Okay.
I was going to say one other thing, as I understand it, today you're just, it's just the hearing, your vote's going to be at the next, next meeting. So we can have more, you know, we'll have a cleaner rate sheet we can give you because that's what you'll be actually voting on.
Okay. All right, and you're sticking around for the public hearing? Can you, in case there's a question or something?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
And a quick comment on that rate increase flyer, that information needs to make it on there too, the reference to the warrant articles that passed in 2019 and that were actually not on that same level as we had planned at the time.
Is that something you're working on?
Staff is working on that, is what I understand.
Yep.
And that's supposed to just go out as a separate mailer? Is that what we've decided?
We haven't decided yet, but we talked about that, yeah.
I didn't realize you were talking to us, Will. So the rate increase flyer and the CCR go on this. We can put them both on the same postcard like we did last time.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that the information here on the slide that Keith is presenting or have presented. You know, we got to make sure that people realize that even with the 22% increase here in one shot. And again, we have to talk about how we sell this, right? How we make people understand that this is not just a wild ass. Wild guess, increase here. Sorry about that.
Information that Michelle pulled up really will back it up huge.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll work that into the postcard and stuff too.
Yeah, and, and I guess I want to point out that we're actually conservative in comparison to what already had been in front of the voter and what has been voted in place in 2019. You know, we're, we're actually far behind those numbers as far as the rate increases goes. So we're, and, and we're doing that because we still see the surplus. You know, at least being there, right? It's, it's not as healthy as it was last year, but it's still a surplus. There's still a positive. There's, there's, you know, money that remains at the end of the day. And I think we have to make it clear to the voter that we're, we're adjusting those predicted or forecasted rate increases. Or projected rate increases, we're adjusting those down because of the surplus still being there. Because that's one of the big discussions that people have. They look, you know, at the school district, for example, and, and or, you know, some, some, some other entities. And, and they look at the, the fact that, you know, they're increasing the budget year after year, but they have a surplus at the end of the year. What we're trying to do is here, we're, we're looking at all the needles on, in the carpet, right? And, and we're comparing them all and monitoring them all. And we realize, okay, we can project that we need that increase over time eventually. But we're actually still good right now because the surplus is still a surplus. So we're still okay. We don't have to go down that path that quick.
But just in the long term, I just do want to stress that we kind of have to have the three-pronged approach on. We have our operating budget, but when there is a quote unquote surplus, we also have our unrestricted fund balance that we, we need to agree on and establish the policy of, of where we want to maintain that. As well as keeping in mind our capital improvement plan and the reserve fund contributions that we need to make to, to reach those goals and acknowledge that, yes, of course, as you've said, at times we won't make the goal, you know, it's a goal. So some years, we may choose to do different things with, with the surplus. But just to keep our eye on the long term also.
Right, but they are part of the budget. When we decide that we want to make additional payments to, say, for example, the capital reserves, they're going to be in our budget, right? And we actually are making these, 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 these payments and push that money over, right?
Actually, no, the cap, capital reserve, for many years, various municipal entities had included a, a smaller contribution to capital reserves in the budget. Two, two to three years ago, DRA came out and said we can no longer do that. So our capital reserve contributions actually come from surplus. So when we make budget, that does not include any capital reserve contributions. We have capital budget expense for when we're purchasing a new vehicle, that would be something that would be listed on like a capital budget expense on the operating budget. But for capital, fund contributions, those come from surplus.
I guess what I'm, when I'm using the term surplus, I'm looking at it after we made the contributions. You know, to, to, to long-term investments and, and reserves. So maybe, you know, maybe I'm not using the proper term. But the commitment to these, to these reserves is, is, is still ongoing, right? We have agreed to that. So I'm looking at it, at the end of the day, the bottom line of the district, after we made, we have made those contributions. Whatever money we have left there at that point is, is what we're looking at when we make these rate increase decisions.
The, the contributions that we just forwarded in April were voted on at the, the March meeting, but they were based on accumulated surplus that was as of the prior fiscal year. So that was from FY twenty. And as we're in FY twenty-one, it would be the surplus that we have at the end of this year, we would also look at where our fund balance, the unrestricted sort of emergency funds we have for operating. We look to see where, where that is. We look at what we have for surplus, decide if we want the surplus to go to the unrestricted fund balance, or if we're wanting to put that money towards the capital reserve payments. So that's why when we that will say X dollars, I mean, X percentage of a rate increase will get us to cover operating budget, but we need this additional percentage to make our capital reserve contribution goals. So to the equipment and facilities and the various other capital reserves.
And, and I think we're saying the same thing, what, all of the above, whatever you know, whatever bottom line there is of remaining surplus after we made all of these contributions. Since we still have how do you call, what do you call that? You have, you have the surplus.
Balance, the unrestricted. So the unrestricted fund balance is that when I refer to the fund balance policy that, that we're going to move forward with discussing and incoming to an agreement on, that would be the unrestricted fund balance. So that would be outside of the capital reserves in the industry. And I've, I've talked with Keith and I've looked at some of the American Waterworks Association industry stats. It's usually three to six months worth of operating costs that are just kept unrestricted. No other obligations that are cut there. They both are there for emergencies, but they also having a solid fund balance enables us to do things like matching to get a grant. It allows us to have a solid financial standing. So if we do have to bond, we can get better rates, makes us more eligible for some of the funds that, that DES has been able to connect us with for funding.
Yeah, and maybe we need, I don't know if the other commissioners are, it seems that I'm not. So for me, the surplus is the, the, the bottom line of, of, of whatever, you know, gains we have had after we paid all of the above, including any contributions to, you know, to, to, to cover reserves and so on. What I'm hearing from you is that the surplus is actually an intermediary result prior to making those contributions. And the ultimate end, you know, bottom line is the on, what did you call it, on?
Unrestricted.
Unrestricted fund balance. So maybe, maybe I'm not clear on that. And maybe the other commissioners are clear and I'm not, but I would like to understand that a little bit better. Break that down in one of the future meetings.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So if we're moving to a public hearing at seven, what do we need to cover? I don't think I have like an outline to read anything from on that, so.
My experience is done. And, and if you want to just open a public hearing and say we're proposing new rates and today we'll listen, you know, I can give you a two-minute summary of what I just said to see if anybody kicks on. And then you're just seeking in, input. And then I suspect Jill, Ron, we were, we were gonna, we decided we would vote at the next meeting, I think, or whenever, but yeah. Vote won't happen today.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it was that simple and I wasn't missing some handout or something that I Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on that?
Maybe I can just, on the, Michelle, it sounds like you're indicating the DRA just says you're not allowed to budget for capital fund, surplus funds. You have to take care of that from the surplus. And that's
When we create a budget, my, my first year coming in, we created our expense budget. And then I created our revenue budget based on projections for what I thought we would actually bring in total to the district for revenues. When I tried to submit this to DRA, they said, no, budgeting, operational budgeting is a bottom line. All they want is revenues submitted to them as far as the budget goes, that equal.
So then when we're doing budgeting, we should So then when we're doing budgeting, we should plan for a surplus such that it would fund our capital expenditure needs.
Exactly, and that's why the the bottom of our current budget, we had a bottom line um, which was showing we needed an approximate nine percent increase. And on that final page of our detail, um, I had outlined if we did a five hundred thousand dollar contribution, a two hundred and fifty thousand in a zero contribution, but also included um, factoring in some funds for the fact that down the road, the P F A S media uh, changeouts would be included in the operating budget, just so we would know what we're looking at once that's also added onto the budget. So I can just resend that page just so everyone can um see what I'm referring to uh tomorrow morning. Um, but I do run through just operating budget, capital reserve goals, and then we have the unique situation that right now we'll be putting an amount in the operating budget for P F A S media. But also for the first couple of years, while we get familiar with how it actually plays out for for needing uh, changeout, we will be able to access the capital reserves for that, but ultimately we need to also be adding that into the operational budget ongoing.
Yeah, I guess my only point was if somebody asks us why there's a surplus, we can say that we need to budget for capital reserves out of that surplus. Simple as that. That's where we need to budget it from. That's why there is a surplus. So I get it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I guess the question that I have is the twenty-two percent, the base rate increase that we're talking about. Does that include a capital reserve contribution of a half million or two fifty or something less? Is that factored in there?
It's factored in, and uh, we included it, the twenty-two percent with your current current budget. Um, will allow you a five hundred thousand contribution, capital reserves.
Okay, and I know that was identified years ago in the last rate study in, well, at least in two thousand and eighteen, I think it was, right?
Yeah, and maybe even before that, when some of the asset management work was done, but yep.
Okay. All right. So we still got five minutes to uh go before that. I don't know if there's any other questions or I don't know if it makes sense to jump into something, a new topic for a few minutes here or not. We had six fifty-four. Anything else that's a quick? I'm sure the corrosion report and the master plan update or not. Material.
I was gonna make them pretty quick. You know me, I can be pretty quick, but um, I don't think they're five minutes. I mean, maybe we can just take a quick look at the trend charts for five minutes before we go into the uh rate hearing.
Yeah, all right.
And then, and then, you know, depending on what happens, maybe we just have to reschedule for those two things or whatever you guys want to do, but I can share my screen, give you a quick summary on what we did and what you're looking at.
Sure.
And that way, you know, you, I think there'll be more conversation on it for sure. All right, so we sent you and we are working on trend charts now. Hopefully you can see this. Um, my staff gave me these in a PDF, so we could talk to them. We are tracking the 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 P F A S levels in the lead vessel at uh treatment plant at Wells four and five. And what you're seeing here, this is, this chart is all P F A S. So there's a couple of charts later that we deal with the individual uh, P F A S contaminants we see, but this one's all. So if you take the sum of everything that's present going into the treatment plant at each port, how much of it's getting removed? So it's just a summation of what's going in of all of them and what's coming out at each port. So what you're seeing here is at the uh, the hundred percent port, which is um, you know, essentially at the discharge of the first vessel, we're getting a hundred percent removed. Everything is still being removed at at the discharge of the first vessel. It's also getting a hundred percent removed at the seventy-five percent port as well. And at the fifty percent port, we're getting ninety-two, ninety-three percent removals of all the P F A S. Even though we have some presence at that point, we're still removing ninety-three percent. And at the twenty-five percent port, which is this one, we're still getting seventy percent removal of all P F A S, okay? So it just gives you a sense that the carbon has value. The carbon, even though we may see individual parameters going through, we're still seeing significant reductions of P F A S. If you look at each port, this is the twenty-five percent port, we have that same efficiency, the same a hundred percent um, or all P F A S summed efficiency, that's that seventy percent. So you can see that at the twenty-five percent we're support, we're slowly, you know, losing efficiency. And now we're showing you what parameters are breaking through at twenty-five percent, okay? The individual parameters. And we do these at each port, then we also did it at fifty percent port. And the fifty percent port after eight months of operation is only one P F B A, which we all expected was the one that break broke through. But we're still, and we're still getting ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four percent overall removal of P F A S. And then the last chart, well, no, there's two more, seventy-five percent. Still, still haven't seen anything show up at seventy-five percent. So we're getting a hundred percent removal after eight months. And same with, obviously with the the hundred percent port, which is the dist between the two vessels, still getting a hundred percent. So we will talk to you about continuing to to trend these as, you know, as we look to how you wanna and when you want to plan for replacement. But the, we thought this was a good way to see it because you're not only looking at the individual parameters, you're also looking at the overall efficiency of the carbon, because you know the dilemma we're in if we just change out the carbon because one P F B A breaks through, you know, we're still throwing away carbon that's overall still giving us, you know, eighty or ninety percent removal of all P F A S. So that's the, that's the plus and minus, that's the push-pull that we're, we're, we're sorting out. We thought this is a good way to represent it. And I'll show you one other thing real quick, see if you have any questions. We, we have been updating and we are tracking the raw water quality P F A S in all the wells, keeping those current. This goes back to two thousand and sixteen when we had all the noise in the data. And the four regulated contaminants are being monitored here. We're not doing all of them, we're just doing the four regulated for these right now. And that's for well two, well three. Wells four, we had the big gap and four R, because it was offline for a while, same with well five. And uh well, seven as well. And well eight. So those, I I believe you guys all have those in your packet, so.
You do.
Yeah. And the other thing I I wanted to remind you, we didn't mention on the rate study, but you know, I triggered as I was looking at this because, you know, we, a lot of the budgets for the key fast treatment plants were budgeted for the single pass. No, no leg vessels, and we all know that we went back for the leg vessels too. So, because that's why we're seeing all these exceedances. Right, so that's a real quick summary of what was in your packet for trend charts, raw water quality and at the vessel treatment four or five.
All right. Thanks, Keith. Anyone have any questions on that? All right. Um, kind of keep, I'm kind of wondering, I'm surprised that uh P F B A hasn't come through the seventy-five percent port yet. I was surprised. It looked like it went through the the twenty-five and the fifty percent port in like two months each.
Yeah, what was interesting on that too is the P F B A plateaued at the twenty-five percent port. So it went up, and I guess maybe that's maybe it's equivalent to the influence concentration. I didn't go back and double check, but yeah, uh, and then at the fifty percent port, we are seeing it ramping up a little bit. So maybe that'll start plateauing too, but you're right, nothing at the seventy-five percent.
Right.
As of April.
Right, okay. If we see something funky, I know there was like this uh rollover phenomenon where I think P F B A actually released or something and spiked at some point in the, was it the column test that we did?
Yeah, we saw those in the R S S C Ts, yeah.
Right. All right. So I'm seeing seven o'clock on my um, screen here, so I guess we could um, looks like we want to recess this meeting before we open the public hearing. Um, so if I can entertain a motion to recess, if that's what we need. By anybody? All right, motion to recess by John. Uh, anybody have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, second by Wolf. So let's do a roll call. John, how do you vote on recessing?
Hi.
Wolf?
In favor.
Paul?
Would I?
And myself as well, so that's four zero zero for recessing. I'm not sure if we needed a vote on that or not, but uh, anyways, the present meeting is now in recess. Um, so now at seven oh one, I'm going to uh call to order the public hearing regarding the rate increase. Um, and again, this rate increase, uh, it's essentially twofold. One is to increase the base rate by twenty-two percent, and that applies to all M B D customers. Um, and the other part of it is to have a um, a a higher tier increase of an additional ten percent uh, for water users that use on average more than two hundred and forty-nine gallons per day over the course of the billing period, the three-month billing period. Um, the billing frequency, the billing cycles will remain the same. Um, and I think we're proposing to implement this as far as, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was the plan was to do a townwide meter reading on June thirtieth, is that correct? And to implement, to implement this in the bills that are going to start on July first uh, or the the, the meter readings that are going to start after July first, basically. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, um, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, anybody, Keith?
Uh, Dawn, I could just do a quick little summary and share my screen just in case like anybody's out there in M T V land watching, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
And I thought the best way to uh, explain what's happening here is to to compare it to what we were talking about historically when these petitioned articles and warrant articles came to be. Um, there was some rate presentations and a rate study that we did for you um, where we projected rates. What I've done here is I've taken that slide, this is the actual slide that we presented to two, two and a half years ago in February, when these warrant articles were being debated. And um, we have, uh, we at that time had repres- uh, recommended based on the warrant articles, if they passed, we would see a thirteen percent rate increase in twenty twenty, a thirteen percent rate increase in twenty twenty-one. Those two rate increases were essentially to catch up with budget needs and current capital projects. They were outside of the P F A S. And then a forty percent rate increase uh directly related to P F A S. A couple of things has happened since then, you know, some of the costs went up a little bit, mostly because the regulatory climate changed and we have lag vessels, so there was additional dollars um, put to this. So, you know, we've been tracking um, what the rate adjustments would need to be, um, based on some of that. We also had some offsetting benefits, maybe in a little bit of grants that did come in that we didn't anticipate then. So there's been a little bit of pluses and a little bit of minuses. But what's been happened against those recommendations is in twenty twenty, there was a rate increase of nineteen percent. And then there was a um, no rate increase last year. So essentially, as of today, we are under what was, what was recommended for rate increases. We are at this point recommending a twenty-two percent rate increase to help us catch up a little bit, which is also under where we thought we would be. Uh, the real one of, there's, there's several reasons, but probably one of the biggest ones is the debt service that, that um was due, we expected to be due starting in twenty twenty-two is actually going to be one year later. So that allows us to to uh do some incremental rate adjustments um, as opposed to having that big jump right now. So we're proposing that twenty-two percent rate increase that currently will help with the operation budget costs we're seeing now and maintains a five hundred thousand dollar capital reserve. So it brings our total rate increases from when we start first started looking at this to be about forty-five percent. And that's compared to where we thought we would be at the end of the day with P F A S projects at about seventy-nine percent. So we're still well under where we thought we would be. There will be another rate increase and a rate adjustment once all the costs and all the O and M costs uh are are better known, but that, that's going to be uh, you know, next year at the earliest. So that's the twenty-two percent rate adjustment. I did take a moment here and and put a quick table together to summarize what that is. Because the other thing that we are adding to help promote conservation and messaging in terms of 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 trying to main, uh, reduce use or or be uh, to conserve use, especially related to irrigation and high, high use is we're going to set up a tiered rate structure. We debated that at the last meeting, Underwood's recommended it based on the goals that the commissioners had. And so anybody, as Dawn said, that uses about two hundred and fifty gallons a day is going to see a twenty-two percent rate increase just to cover the increased uh expenses that we talked about. That rate's going to go from two thirty-two to two eighty-three per hundred cubic feet. And if you are a user that uses more than two hundred and fifty gallons a day, you're going to, there's going to be an additional cost for those gallons above that two fifty, and that's going to be a ten percent add-on. So for any water consumed over three thousand per quarter, that, that three dollars and eleven dollars, three dollars and eleven cents will be assessed for that amount, that amount over. So if you're using less than two hundred and fifty, you're just going to see the twenty-two percent. If you're using more than two hundred and fifty, you're going to see the twenty-two percent plus the additional ten percent on anything you use over three thousand. The meters, charges for the domestic five eighths, three quarters will also go up twenty-two percent. All the meter charges will go up twenty-two percent for a residential user, that's sixty-four dollars a year to seventy-eight dollars a year. And the hydrant charges also will go up from seventy-eight to ninety-five dollars, and that's also a twenty-two percent adjustment. So, and I think um, your staff, I know Michelle looked at this, and we did look at this as well, this still keeps Meramec under the state average uh, by quite a bit. Um, but this is, this is tracking under what we thought it would be, but it's, um, I think both, both are need, well, the rate increase is definitely needed, and I think the the tiered rate structure is going to be a good uh, good plan for messaging and conservation going forward. So that was a brief update on what we're proposing and um, be happy to turn it back over to you, Dawn, see if there's any questions.
Thanks for that summary, Keith. I know, I just wanted to say that I think the the reason for the tier is, um, you know, it's, it's really a a means to try and have some water conservation. Um, and I don't know how successful that'll be, but um, I do also believe that the reason why we need to find new sources out here a lot of times to meet the summer demand, and the summer demand is driven by irrigation users. So I think it's more of a user fee so that the people who are irrigating, using more than the average demand that a non-irrigation customer uses. Um, you know, those people who are irrigating will pay a bit of a surcharge. And that's going to help cover some of the costs to offset some of the costs to find new sources. And also to pay to treat the water, the extra water that the irrigation customers are using, because we have to treat all of our water, basically. Um, so that's kind of how it came about. I just wanted to add that in case somebody was asking why are we proposing this tier and, you know, what, where's the money going to go? And essentially, that's, I guess, what I envisioned, that the, the additional revenue from the, the tier rate increase um, would help to offset some of those costs. So that's just, that's the only comment I wanted to make on this to help explain that. Um, if any other, other commissioners have any questions or comments at this point, um, please feel free, and then I'll, I'll ask the public if, and does anybody in the public that has any questions or comments, but um, any other commissioners have anything to offer on this, questions, comments, or anything? All right, seeing none. Uh, then I guess we can look at the um, looks like the panelists here are obviously just everybody that's on the call from M B D and whatnot. I only see two attendees, Dave and Kristen. And I don't know if they have any questions or comments on any of this. Um, but as far as uh, I don't know if there's a way, I can't, I don't know if I can see anybody calling in. So I'm not sure if there are any phone call callers that are waiting online, if we can tell that. I'm not sure if I have access to that information.
They would be considered attendees.
They would, okay.
Yep. There's nothing posted for questions. And Dave and Kristen are M B D.
Right. All right, so it doesn't look like we have any questions for the public. So if there are no questions from the public, I guess I will close the public hearing. And we can go ahead and reconvene the regular meeting at this time, so I'll close the public hearing at seven eleven. And we can reconvene the regular meeting as well, at seven eleven as well. And I don't think we need a vote to reconvene the meeting, so we can just go back to the regular session at this point. And I believe we were at the point of discussing either the control, the corrosion control report or the master plan update. I'm not sure which of those, does the board feel we want to cover both of those tonight or try to maybe leave one for a future date, or any of these two reports? Any, anything in these two reports, a corrosion control report or the master plan, do they have any impact on anything that we are required to know before the next annual, you know, the end of this annual budget or? I'm just thinking if, because I know they're pretty involved, I don't know if we have enough time to cover both of these. But I don't know if one was more important than the other in terms of giving us information that we need more critically, time wise.
I, you know, for the master plan report, I think you've seen it all, Dawn and commissioners, you've seen pretty much the, the findings and the recommendations there. There's nothing really new other than you've now seen that, you know, the final deliverable and draft, so there's another opportunity to make comments and make revisions. But there is, you know, if you jump to the conclusions and recommendations, there are just some steps going forward, we've talked about them before. They will help you in your future budgeting for capital projects. How we, how we suggest we deal with the Manchester Emergency Connections and the Penachuk Emergency Connections. And we are supporting in this master plan, the ongoing, you know, you do want to move forward with Mitchell Woods, as long as there's no PFAS, which there's not so far. PFAS free, we are recommending move, continue to move forward with artificial recharge. We are recommending a cost to service study at the Penachuk Connection to look at long-term wholesale possibilities there to see in the end if it is cost effective, we're not so sure it is, but you need to confirm that. Especially when it relates to the fact that historically Meramec has wanted to control their own sources. And then we are recommending longer term improvements to the Manchester Emergency Connection as well, there's just some capital needs there. And so I think what we would be doing over the next six months, as you go free, you know, identify your capital improvements plan, wrap these into that so that you can, can move forward with them. But if you, what's really nice about this, this document, real quick, is that you, you do see if I can get you there. The cost effectiveness of this, of the various options, and you've seen some of that. I'll share the screen, because this was what I considered sort of the meat of it. Where we had identified the new sources in blue, the redundant sources in green. Which is, you know, replacement of well number three with well nine, didn't get you any new supply, but it got you, you know, replaced a problem well. And then your emergency sources, so your emergency sources are cheaper because they, you know, there's no capital investment for them. But didn't share?
No. There you go.
I was one button short, that's all it was. One click short, sorry about that. This is the, what, you know, we think is a pretty good summary of what that capital plan showed, and as I was saying, the emergency sources are shown here, it's not a new supply or reliable supply, but they are there for you in an emergency, both Manchester and Penachuk, they're not very expensive because there, there's no capital improvements. Well, number nine is the redundant source, this is a good graphic here, this shows that it's lower cost. So use, replacing well three with well number nine is a good move. And then the other new sources are looking at Penachuk and Manchester as wholesale arrangements. They're very close to, you know, what artificial recharge and, and Mitchell Woods can do. Mitchell Woods is a little bit more expensive, but these are more your, you know, your supply, your, you control them. So that's why we advance, we're staying the course with suggested to advance them. And then when you start looking at this, this one's interesting, this is what would happen if, if Mitchell Woods had to have PFAS treatment, it just would be too expensive. It's just not, not going to make sense. And the real reason is, is if you remember this chart, this is cost per gallon. So it's not, it's not cost, it's cost per gallon so that we could normalize against all the alternatives. So you've seen this before and, and some of the recommendations that we were making are based on this. So I don't think there was a ton of new stuff, the one thing that was new is we did add in the Wilson Hill area and we put some plant costs in there. We couldn't put Wilson Hill on this chart. Because it, we don't know what the yield is, these all had to have a yield associated with them in order to do a dollars per gallon. But we are, we do recommend in the master plan report, you continue to pursue the various sites and opportunities out in that area. Whether you're on one side of the river or the other, we were a little bit more broad in looking at it. Because I know on the south side, the town owns the land, on the north side, you'd have to be dealing with different private entities, private property owners. But we were general in terms of, yep, this is a good idea, you should continue to look at this. Because in overall, we are seeing, you do continue to need more supply, you've always have. And, and you've, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, Jamie's been advocating for looking at these additional sites.
Keith, can I just, maybe just chime in on that? So I'm just wondering why we are looking at the more expensive alternatives like the Mitchell Woods and artificial recharge instead of the Penachuk wholesale agreement.
Well, you're doing
Which also seems a lot simpler.
Yeah, and what we're doing here is we're suggesting both, so what we've actually said in our recommendations, and I will be clear in saying that historically, and maybe this board is different, but historically, the board has said we want to control our own sources. Okay?
Yeah, I would, I would be different on that.
Yeah, and that's fine, and so the way we're allowing you to sort of manage that is go do the cost to service study at Penachuk, go find out if it truly is less like we suggest it might be here. And then make that decision before you advance the final design and the construction of Mitchell Woods and artificial recharge. So it's, it's kind of, we're, we're kind of giving you a path to answer that question, John. But we're also, you know, at least going off some of the lead of, of whether, and then allowing you to debate whether or not you want to control your own sources or have an arrangement like that, and, and a wholesale arrangement is, it's a reliable source. So, so you know, that is a good option for you, but that's how we're, that's how we recommended it in the master plan report. Cost of service study will set you back about thirty or forty thousand maybe for you to find out what Penachuk will expect for, for you to pay. Manchester, you already have a pretty good sense, they don't need the cost of service study because they have the source development charge. But we're not suggesting build Mitchell Woods or AR until you find out what Penachuk really will cost. Then you make a decision.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I agree with that, John, too, and I'm not necessarily in the, you know, I don't want to look at blinders and just say we're only going to look at in-town groundwater supplies, no matter what, if there's a more effective method out there from another water supplier, I just want to do what's more cost effective for our customers. So I'm definitely with you on that one. Also, Keith, one thing I kind of was just looking over this, over the weekend, the present worth graphs in here, the orange lines, bars. I believe those include the capital cost as well as the operational cost, all kind of averaged out over twenty years.
Yep.
So I was kind of more wondering what the operational cost would be as a present worth value, not including the capital cost, because if you look at this, something might have a low capital cost. But then a higher operational cost. And we wouldn't, we, you know, maybe we wouldn't want to pursue that, because why would you spend money? You know, it's cheap construction cost on something, but if it's going to be an expensive recurring cost, then I, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking I thought we were going to see something that just the operational cost, not including the capital cost. And I went in the report and I see at the, one of the last two appendices where all of the information was gathered, the cost estimates. You do definitely break down the, the capital cost as well as the operational cost. I'm wondering if there would be a way to add a third bar in here that would be just the operational cost? Instead of having to include it with the capital cost so that we can kind of compare capital costs separate from the operational costs? You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, we can't, I mean, the, the, the O and M cost is actually listed for each option in this, in the cost sheets on the back in the appendix. So specifically, the annual cost for each option is listed there, it's just not tabulated into a separate form or a table that you're, you're looking for. But if you're familiar with your engineered economics, this is a pretty standard way of doing it. We can certainly list the O and M, if it's a factor in your mind and you're thinking we should and could. But when you really want to compare apples to apples, because O and M's a recurring cost, it's, it's, you know, there's a factor and the econ, the economics and the inflation and the time value of money all gets figured into that so that you're actually not summing up the O and M costs and bringing it to present worth. It's, it's what it really says is if you had to spend two hundred thousand dollars a year on an option, I'd have to put X not number of dollars in the bank today to cover that for twenty years with a certain assumed interest rate. So that's, that's why it's always less than the sum of the O and M. But so this is a pretty standard way to compare it. All the reports are done that way, but if you'd like to have the O and M listed in a table, we can do it, it is in the appendix.
Yeah, maybe just something some way that we can kind of compare each of those. And I, I know, you know, there were, there were a lot of them that were kind of sort of best guest estimates, I think.
Yeah, this is a planning level report and, and you know, you look at the bars and you say one's, you know, two dollars and higher than the other, you just got to remember, I should put error bars on these because, you know, we got to recognize this is probably plus or minus twenty percent. But it does give you some sort of a sense. I, I wanted to add one other thing too, because there's more to think about, you know, we, we were talking about, yeah, maybe Penachuk is, is less expensive, but there are other factors when you look at our report. For example, on a artificial recharge, maybe it's a little bit more expensive, but and we compared it on a, you know, an apples to apples basis, but there are other longer term benefits and Ron will be the first to tell you, you know, if you get a pipe in the river and you get it permitted, yeah, it's, you know, maybe it's expensive for AR, but you're starting to set yourself up for the future in Meramec too, if you're a real visionary, having your own intake from the river for surface water treatment at some date. You never know, so you're starting to think that way too, so there are some other factors you may want to think about on some of these options and just specifically for wells four and five. On that one, for example.
And you made a comment before about Mitchell Woods being PFAS free, I thought it was somewhere, it was either in this report or the corrosion report, but I thought I did see that there is PFAS in Mitchell Woods, it's just not the regulated ones, or we, we're certainly nowhere near the MCLs or anything, but I thought I did see some PFAS.
Yeah, maybe I'll have to be, be careful on what I
Which was a surprise, because I did think, I thought I remembered that it was all non-detective everything, but I guess that's
That was my understanding too, it's not in our report, so maybe there's, there's new data, but I thought we had confirmed it.
Corrosion control report, but we, we can, you know, I just want to point that out, we'll follow up.
Double check.
And one interesting thing. And Jill, I don't know if you remember a phone call from Jeff Martz, but there was a letter that came out April sixth this year, twenty twenty one to Goldar Associates to have all of the apparently Goldar Associates on behalf of St. Obane did not identify community and non-transient public wells, they only identified private and transient wells in that consent order, so there was a discussion about having Goldar go back out and identify the community, non-transient community wells. Which Wells four and five is a community well right inside the middle of the GMZ, but that's not my point of this conversation. I asked Jeff Martz about that question, about how it applies to Wells four and five. And he said that, you know, they haven't really decided, it's, they, as far as DES considered, Wells four and five is already being treated, so it's a moot point in their respect, but he did tell me at that time that he had discussed with you, I believe, that according to the GPS location of Mitchell Woods well, he believes that it's within the GMZ boundary. So if there was PFAS that needed to be treated there, there's a better case to be made to bring that back for enforcement to the polluter, which would be St. Obane inside that GMZ. We're far away from the MCL, so I'm sure there's never going to be treatment there as far as we know with the present water quality, but if there is ever a, an exceedance or, you know, if there's ever treatment that is required by DES at Mitchell Woods, if that's inside the groundwater management zone boundary, there's a case to be made for having St. Obane have to pay for that. So that
Wouldn't there also be a case to be made that we knew it was in the boundary, we put it there anyway?
Well, that was installed like fifteen years ago, so we didn't know anything that back then.
It's been in the works for a while, yeah. Well, be that as it may, I was just, I think we should be thinking about ourselves as providers of water and not treaters of PFAS, you know?
Well, if there's PFAS in the water, we got to treat it, right? If it's over the MCL, obviously.
And don't forget too, and Dawn, maybe just to give me an opportunity to correct, you're, you're right, and I, and the PFAS levels at Mitchell Woods are down near the detection limits, which is why, you know, they're right at the detection limits, but they are present, obviously, and nothing's, nothing is zero. But if you were to go to Penachuk, for example, or, or Manchester, you know, they have, they're, they're present too.
Right.
So, you know, there's going to be some policy decisions on how you want to deal with that. Because the Penachuk options that we, we proposed here do not have PFAS treatment either.
Right.
I thought it said they did.
They, they, they do put GAC in their, in their sand beds to treat for, to reduce PFAS, but they don't, you know, it reduces it, it doesn't get it to non-detect.
So the PFAS treatment that's in the graph there is Penachuk's PFAS treatment, which is compliant with MCLs. But
Right.
Detectable.
And, and, and that's, that was one of the other reasons, John, now that I'm remembering is that, you know, because there is some PFAS present, so there would be a decision on what you'd want to do PFAS, there is, you know, they're again near the detection limit, but it is present in the water. You're doing a good job reducing it, but it's not below detect.
So this whole conversation goes back to the warrant articles and what was presented to the customers about the goal of being non-detect for Wells two, three, seven, and eight. Doesn't have anything to do with Mitchell Woods or Wells four and five, but I got to think if we're applying a certain concept to Wells two, three, seven, and eight, we, we, I think we're doing it either system wide altogether, or we're not doing it at all. So when you say our goal is not to treat for PFAS, that's not what we told our customers in the warrant articles.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to make a point that we, we, you know, we can go through all this and, and put the PFAS on in case it comes down or anything like that, I mean, I suppose it could happen anywhere. But in my mind, it seems like the Mitchell Woods is very expensive, and if we have to put PFAS treatment, they're extremely expensive.
Right, so
I don't know, I don't know what's acceptable, is near the detection level through acceptable, or is it not? I guess that's what we got to decide.
Right.
What are the work, warrant articles guide, guide us to do? Is it to treat it and reduce it, or is it to eliminate it? And what's realistic and what's our price increase going to be if we go with the latter?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. The only point I was making in my statement about that DES letter that went out on April sixth, that if, if Mitchell Woods is in the groundwater management zone based on its location, and if we are required to treat for PFAS at Mitchell Woods in the future, let's say we start pumping this well, year later, PFOA is at fifteen. Well, now we got to treat, we're inside the groundwater. Well, now we got to treat, we're inside the groundwater management zone. We're going back to the polluter on this one. So there's a little bit less concern with me about having to spend that money for PFAS treatment at Mitchell Woods is my point than there was before this April 6th letter that came out that we've subsequently identified because of that letter. Based that Jeffrey Martz at D E S indicated his understanding is that Mitchell Woods is in just inside that groundwater management zone boundary. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility to go back to the polluter if in the future that well is determined to require PFAS treatment. Obviously, if it's below the limit and we want to decide to put treatment on that well, that would be at our own cost. But I'm just saying in the future, if that PFAS goes up to require treatment, you know, being inside the groundwater management zone gives us a little bit more flexibility there. That's all. Which which brings up the other ironic point is that Wells two and three are outside the outer boundary of the G M Z and have not only detectable levels, but they exceed the M C Ls. So go figure.
Keith, was it, yes, you, the what you're looking at for results, was that the last results that were done at Mitchell Woods or? When those are are from?
It says here they were.
Probably from Jamie a couple of year ago or so, maybe?
Yeah, but I feel like it says here 2008 to 2020. So whatever data was available, my guessing on Mitchell Woods, my guess on Mitchell Woods would probably be one data point in 2008, one 2020. But because I don't think there was any regular routine sampling out there, but I am showing that.
Didn't measure PFAS in 2008, right?
Yeah, well, this ta- this table also refers to other water quality like iron manganese. So yeah, you're right. It's probably one data point from 2020.
Yeah.
Or some or some point. I'd have to go back and look because this was just a summary table that gave the average range of time and then the max in that timeframe. And all of them were right around the detection limit.
I can go back and look.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, easily. We can go back and look as soon. We're just kind of, we're running the assumption it was a non-detect out there, so.
Yeah, I'll find out when that data was if you can't find it.
Right.
Yeah, that that's why I brought it up because it changed my recollection of I thought everything was non-detect out there, but.
And I would agree.
Non-detect, it's it's right, just basically at the detection limit.
Yep. Exactly. Well, the good news is on this, if you, you know, if you follow those or agree with those recommendations, you can do the cost of service study. You'll have more information to compare to these options to make those decisions later on. So we're just, you know, we're giving you the time to sort of continue to assess those.
Okay. I mean, I made a number of comments here. I just, it might be easier if I just maybe do this directly with someone from your office or something. I don't know if we want to take the time to go through. I I'm not sure if everybody even had a chance to review this document. I'm guessing probably not. So this might be something we might want to bring back at a later date to review in more detail after everyone has a chance to look through it, maybe.
Yeah, depending on what your comments are, Dawn, a lot of times what we do is if you went through Ron, you know, if anybody and everybody has comments or thoughts, go through Ron, they can all come sort of to us at one point. We can address them all and revise the report and, you know, get back to you. It's usually the cleanest and simplest way. And then if you want to have another discussion at a commissioner's meeting, we would do that.
Yeah, because I I've I just went into the PDF file and I've added some some callouts, which is quick comments here and there. So maybe I can send that to Ron and copy you as well. And if you want to just go and look through, you know, each of those comments or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I just think maybe a lot of it is, I don't want to waste everyone's time if there's just a few things that, you know, I have questions on.
Well, I don't think they're wasting time because all of these, this, all of these discussions gain gain more clarity. My my problem with this a little bit is we're we're analyzing this to a very high degree, which isn't a bad thing. But ultimately, we need to ask, what is the, what is the result that we're hoping to gain from from this analysis? And I think we all know that the result is that we want to make the best decision to see how we can add resources of water to to the town supply, right? So I guess my challenge is a little bit, how much longer do we want to analyze? And and when do we start looking into actually making decisions and and and, you know, we're getting to a point where we're almost not, a lot of this information has been out there for a while. We know that Mitchell Woods is is expensive. But the beauty of it is we can basically give it a go at the next meeting by having the voter vote in the the funds for it. And then because the permit is there, you know, we know the water is fairly clean. PFAS part is something that was new to me too. I was always under the impression that there was no non-detect PFAS at Mitchell Woods, so that may change tip to scale, you know, drastically. But again, we always knew it's very expensive, but it's very clean and it's it's at our fingertips, right? So now we have to compare what matters more to us to us, you know, is it, does it matter for us that we can? And we also know it's only good to supply peak demand, which is really what we're struggling with, right? We're we're fine all throughout the year except for May or June till till August, right? Maybe September. So and and Ron has been saying this now for for three years, right, since I've known. So on the other hand, we have artificial recharge, which seems to have a pretty, possibly pretty impressive gain, but also help us maybe with diluting the PFAS in the water for else one five and therefore reducing the 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 exchange of of media. If that all still holds true, which there is a little bit of a question mark on that, right? There's only 80%, 90% certainty that we all have about this because there's there's the science is somewhat right? Yeah, you have to, you have to, not a parallelistic. You know what I mean? We you have to, you know, every every application is a little bit different, right? But but it's a huge project that costs us tremendous amounts of money. And it's what four years out easily if we go through all the different stages of a project, right? Four, maybe five years out. So I guess I'm at that point for me personally where I'm not so sure if I need more information. I I would rather like to see that we start talking about a decision matrix, right? What are decision criteria and how do we, how do we wait, weigh them against each other? You know, is is short, shortness of availability, like like short lead time more important to us? So we can, you know, give people the water that they want in summertime? Then I'm looking at Mitchell Woods is a more comprehensive and and low cost alternative more more the the goal. And and again, also maybe short availability. Well, now we're looking at Pennichuck or 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 Manchester, right? So I I'm at that point where I rather would like to see a discussion about what are the the decision criteria, criteria? And 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 putting a matrix together that makes us decide for one or for another and and rather put our time into into making it happen. But that's just, that's just me, right? I'm I'm maybe a little bit more, more, I don't know, more gung ho about that stuff than than some other people are. Maybe somebody else needs more information yet to make a decision. I don't know. And that's okay too. I'm just saying that I believe we have a lot of information out there and the ultimate goal is as far as to to get supply for the for the town insured for years to come.
Right.
And the longer, the longer we discuss and the longer we analyze, you know, we we lose another year, basically, right?
Ron, did did the the Pennachuck, the dollars associated with a Pennachuck cost of service make it into the capital improvements plan or budget?
Yes, I think it's in the, it's in the budget. I put it in as a budget line. And I want to, I've taught my 40 grand?
Yeah, that sounds right.
And again, there's maybe discussion that needs to be had. What are we looking for, right? For example, I know that I personally, knowing that Milford and some other towns have been put on a water ban just as much. You know, people are looking at Pennachuck as 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 the golden goose here because they hardly ever have a water ban, right? And even even last summer, they were one of the latest that would put them, would that did put one in place for outside watering. But reality is that Milford was actually my understanding and Ron and you and I, we talked about this a couple of times in meetings. My understanding is that Milford was actually put on restrictions far earlier than Nashua the town. And if that is true, that to me is a sign that I I I would like to have that connection to Pennachuck as an ace up my sleeve and maybe a short term solution without too much to do, right? We can, we can, we can benefit from that. But I don't want this to be the permanent solution at all. Because now we're at the mercy of another entity that we have no leverage against, except for possibly money.
You know, I was just going to suggest that as as well, Wolf, that, you know, maybe it's something we do the short term while we're working out another direction that we move into, you know, whether it's, you know, five, six years to get into like A R or something like that. Right. Possibly do do the Pennachuck cost of service study and 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 get that in the works and always come off it down the road, but.
Or get Mitchell Woods, right? Then Mitchell Woods, how long would it take us to to turn Mitchell Woods around? Two years?
Probably about, right?
Yeah, I would say so.
Right? I mean, two years isn't bad, right? Two, two years isn't bad at all. We know Mitchell Woods is going to cover. And and actually, I don't know, I I would have to look at the numbers right now, but my understanding is Mitchell Wood would cover a big part of the gap of our summer needs, right? So yes, it's expensive, but it's under our control. It's supposedly clean, at least as far as iron manganese go. And probably as far as PFAS goes, to a certain extent. It's within reach, you know, and can be implemented.
Yeah, and we have invested some money in that already.
We we do, we do. Good point. Good point. So I would like to know more about the PFAS situation, Mitchell Woods for sure. And that would be obviously a a no-go if if that is really true.
Unless I got this wrong, Mitchell Woods can do up to 300, what is it gallons?
Yeah.
We're looking to get to 5.9 million. So if my mouth is right, that's about 5% of what we need to get to.
Yeah, I was going to make the same point, John, is Mitchell Woods doesn't get you to the target 5.9 alone.
Right, it's 5%. It's spending all that, it's spending whatever the the capital expenditure is to get 5% of what we need in total. So it's not. Well, it well, it could be part of the solution and it's not the entire solution. I think you bet Pennachuck and and Manchester both at 700. As I recall, Keith, and either of those would get you to where you need to be.
Right. That's right.
Can't say I don't like any of that. I love the idea of putting in clean water in. I love the idea of diluting the the water at Wells four and five. But I think if if the Pennachuck number that's here needs to be further refined, we should at least go through that exercise. It might go up, it might go down, but at least it would tell us what it would be.
Yeah, great. But now we're talking about criteria, right? Which is kind of what I was pointing to. We need to really either formalize the criteria by which to make the decision or, you know, or we we wing it and that's fine with me too with the information that we have. But I agree with John, we need to, we we need to look at the low hanging fruit first, right? The the ones that we can achieve fast without paying paying unreasonable amounts of water. And if that is Pennachuck, then let's look into it hard.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Wolf. I think that we need to, you know, we've we've brought in professionals like Keith and and Jamie to look at the source and the treatment and the distribution and maybe we need to bring in a professional to look at those Warren articles and make sure that we're doing what it says. I I completely understand the spirit with which they were passed. But I would want to have Ts crossed and Is dotted before we proceed down a certain road and make sure that, you know, if we are going to provide PFAS free water, that that is something that could be backed up. Sorry. We have the drag races going on over here, sorry. You know what I mean? Just to make sure that we are legally defensible in terms of what we are putting forth as a plan.
Yeah, you mentioned that before and I think I don't think that's been communicated to Kerry or anybody else to, you know, discuss about what the Warren articles imply versus the way they're actually written. My personal opinion on that, I'm not an attorney, but obviously I know they're written to say reduce PFAS. Not, it doesn't say to eliminate PFAS. That's how they were written. But obviously, the presentation said our goal was non-detect. So what's our exposure? If we backtrack on that goal, that's that's one concern. But the other concern also is what's our exposure if we treat to non-detect of everything when the Warren article says reduce? Because it's going to be a premium cost on that, so.
There there is no, there is no exposure as long as we let the voter decide. And that's why I was saying until the next, until the next, like the media replacement, for example, right? If 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 we as a board decide until the next meeting, we do it proactively on, you know, to stay within non-detect. And then at the next meeting, we put it out there. You find townspeople, if you want to continue non-detect, this is what it's going to cost you, yea or nay, suppose that. And then we're 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 clear as, you know, as we can be. We have a mandate and the same is true if we were to connect, for example, or let's say, for example, there is PFAS to a to a very small degree in in Mitchell Woods. And we put the PFAS, I'm sorry, we put the project for Mitchell Woods out there in front of the voter to fund with all the information that we have available to us at the time, including that it has X percent or X parts per trillion of PFAS in the water. If the voter then approves us to put it in place and we are below the M C Ls, we are as safe as we can be as 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 a district there. Nobody can hold that accountable. Hold us accountable for for violating anything. Because A, we had the voter decide to fund the project and B, we were under the M C Ls in the the voter accepted that level of PFAS that might be in the water.
Yeah, so I think we're probably, that's an important distinction that we need to confirm what our customers want. Because that includes which option on this graph that we want to pick to proceed with. So I don't know that we can proceed with going ahead with some things here without knowing if we need to provide PFAS treatment to non-detect on some of these options. So I don't know if we can, we have to wait around another year for the next annual meeting to have that as a potential Warren article or something to get feedback on. Or if we can do something earlier than that ahead of time. The the thing is, is everyone's going to ask. Yeah, everyone's going to ask us what it's going to cost, but what it's going to cost determines on which option we want to pursue, pursue. So it's sort of a circular reference here, I guess, that we're kind of stuck in to some extent. But anyway, Keith, I just had a question on the Manchester Water Works wholesale agreement versus the Pennachuck Water Works wholesale agreement. I'm surprised that Manchester is quite a bit higher. It's looking like option 4C versus by A?
Yeah, 4C included PFAS treatment. So you'd really want to compare 4B, which is the Manchester wholesale to 5A, which is Pennachuck wholesale. From a present worth point of view, they're pretty close. Manchester is higher because you'd need a pumping station to keep your grade line, that's why. So don't look at 4C because that was best treatment. Look, look, compare 5A to 4B. And they're pretty close or they're closer.
Yeah, so thi- this is where looking at just our operational costs in the future. I would like to see that because I know the rate is a lot less expensive for me. Is a lot less expensive from Manchester than it is. From Penachuck.
Which is why the Manchester present worth looks better, you know, cause it's there's more capital than.
Right.
You know, so, but but what you really need to do is that that cost of service study Penachuck would see Manchester's rates are given. They have it all pre-established. If you're not a town customer, this is what you pay. If you're gonna. Want our water, here's the SDC. Penachuck, we don't have that luxury with them. We have to go through the cost of service study to get both the capital investment. And your wholesale rates. We don't know what those are. So the Penachuck numbers are more. Guesstimates, because that's all we have right now.
Yeah, cause you don't have that cost of study. To give you the rate number to really plug into this graph as a known value, right? So.
Right.
So I I do, I guess I agree, you know, it's a lot of money to spend, whereas we don't. It's kind of funny, you have to spend that kind of money for for Penachuck, but you don't have to spend that for Manchester. Which is kind of strange. I don't understand why they're different like that, but. But I I don't know. I mean, that's a lot of money, thirty or forty thousand, just to spend to get to give us basically a number of what what. It would cost to to buy water from them on a wholesale agreement.
Yeah. One thing to add to that is we've asked them, or they actually suggested, and we agree that that we would be looking at two points. You would be looking at your existing connection point. But they would also want to look at the Route three A connection point at near Anheuser-Busch because. It's easier for them to get water to you there. So the cost investment for them is less. So it actually might be, even though you already have some investment at Route one oh one A. It might be a lower cost option. So we're we're suggesting when you do the cost of service study, we look at both. So you'd have, you'd have two options with Penachuck.
Yeah. All right. Do we want to um? What do we need in order?
What I would suggest on that is um. Is if you, if you think there's some serious interest, I don't know if you have to vote on it yet, cause you don't have a scope and you don't have a fee. Penachuck would have to give us to that. We think it's gonna be under forty. That's what they told us it should be. If you, if there's a board interest in doing this, which, you know, was our recommendation in the report, we can contact Penachuck. I'll work with Ron to get. A a dollar amount that you would then act on. And a scope.
Okay.
I just wouldn't want to put them through it unless you think it's something real, you know, most likely you would do. You don't have to, but, you know, if there's some interest, then we'll go get the scope and fee for you. I will tell you Hudson's doing the same thing right now. You know, they're looking at a cost of service study with Penachuck, so it's it's not an unusual thing. That's, you know, it's what they.
I think we need to. I think we need to answer the question.
I'm just having a hard time finding how do you justify third, how do they justify thirty to forty thousand dollars in this? I mean, what are you gonna have someone? Working eight hours a day on this thing for months or what? I mean, it's. I just don't know that money's going, you know? Like, what are what are we gonna get?
You get it, you get it, you get it, you get a report and you get, you get, you know, recommended capital improvement. Our capital investment cost and a um and a rate.
My biggest concern with that is, and that's maybe the discussion that we need to have at the beginning of that project is. How how? How will they guarantee to us in writing that we will not be cut short with water after we put that investment in place? You know, I I'd hate to spend that money for that connection. Um, and and for researching that connection. And then once we actually do need that water, they're telling us, oh, you're kind of S O L because we. Uh, need that money first for Nashville. Like it happened to Milford. I would be very concerned about that.
Yeah, and it's not the first time, you know, communities deal with this and the way it's usually handled, and we'd have to confirm with Penachuck, but once you're invested, you're now a wholesale customer with them. And so you have rights to the water, just like everybody else has rights to the water. And as I understand it, because I've done this in a few other communities, as we write those agreements. The way we protect you on that is that if they have, they have technical issues. That's what happened in Milford last summer. They lost a pump. They couldn't get the water there, so there was some conservation things they had to do. But the way that. And and again, this is gonna be up to Penachuck, Penachuck too, but the way I've seen it before. Is that if there are technical problems or there are issues in town. Everybody comes down together so that, you know, you you don't have to, they don't shut you off first. You you if everybody has to conserve twenty percent, we all conserve twenty percent, you know, we're in it together.
Are you sure about that there was a, I don't, I don't. I don't think that was related to a technical issue with Milford.
Pretty sure I.
No, that was us, that was us. We had that issue.
No, no, it was.
Nashua had the issue, actually.
Yeah.
They could knock out with the demand, yeah.
They they lost a pump in um in Nashua. That that contributed to the problem. It wasn't your pump. Your pump was fine.
I don't, well, Don Ware told.
We had a valve.
It was a stuck valve or something that was fully open or something. He didn't say anything about it. But to your point, Wolf, about, I did remember, I thought I remembered Milford instituting. An irrigation ban before Penachuck did. But I, you gotta think about what happened last year is they're on, they're on the branch, the distribution line that goes to Milford. The the restriction was on that line. So everybody downstream of that line was affected more than Penachuck's core. System. Because they had water in the core system, they could deliver it, okay. They just couldn't deliver it to Milford. And our pump station at Home Depot is on the same leg as that, so that's why we were affected. So I think that might have been why if Milford did go into an irrigation ban ahead of the rest of Penachuck's core system. It was because of that temporary leg being restricted more than Penachuck's core system. And of course, that's a convenient, you know.
Yeah, and I'm not sure.
Couldn't happen again in the future, it could, right?
Right, to us, right. And I hear what you're saying, and that makes sense, but my understanding is that Milford's restriction didn't end when ours ended. After that valve got repaired. So there's still something that doesn't add up.
Yeah, that could be.
So I will just point you, just, and and again, it could be, could be, we got different stories, but I have an email exchange with Don Ware. It's actually in the report, and it's one of the last things in the report, which Don had said it was a pump that went down. One pump went down, which is what happened this summer. Capacity went down to five one M G D, when they usually can provide seven and a half. And that's why M V D was limited. But.
Right, but it's M V D.
Or. And 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 Milford, yeah, I mean, everybody and their their service area too. I mean, they were, they were struggling. But as a real, as I understood, it was an issue with a pump. Maybe it was a valve on a pump. So.
For me, for me to vote on a connection like that, I would have to see it very, very strong, strongly defined. That, you know, that we're not second-class customers.
Right.
Uh, I I I think we would be looking like fools, you know, putting all that money in place, so we cover. Um, cover any shortages during the peak summer season when when there might be a drought situation. The river is the last resort. And then we're being cut short just because we're second-class customers. I would be very, very disappointed in that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would like to point out, though, Milford has had uh. Um, water restrictions in the past. Matter of fact, it it it's been over the last few years. They've actually looked at what we do for. Uh, what we have for water restrictions and actually tried to model that. Uh, in Milford. I know last year they were, they were going. Trying to increase them because they were having a lot of difficulty as well.
I certainly remember driving through Nashua when the irrigation ban or restriction was on and. They were just driving down one oh one A, everything was wet every day. They were still irrigating like all the time. So maybe there was a ban, no one was enforcing it.
I think a lot of that's Amherst though, too. I I as far as Milford goes, I don't know. Milford may have been the same way, but. That's Amherst, you get to uh. Yeah, by the uh. By the McDonald's down that way, uh, or um down by the the bypass. We go on the bypass. Is where Milford starts.
So to go back to your comment earlier, Don, um. You know, I certainly wanna wanna support the process here and and the the decision making. Should we maybe? You know, talk about criteria for decision? And weigh them against each other? To to be able to classify and categorize each of these options? You know, just just to 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 drive the decision making a little bit forward.
Yeah, like, how do you mean? Like an example or something?
Well, say, for example, you know, Mitchell Woods and and um and um Penachuck both get, for example. A high rating for a short-term availability, right? Um, but um Mitch Mitchell Woods may get a high rating for for um long-term solution. But a low rating for the contribution that it makes. Uh, while Penachuck gets a high rating, excuse me, for for the contribution that it that it makes to the gap. And it also gets a high rating for longevity and all like you. Right? And if we put all of these, and keep it very simple, you know, you get basically. If if we were in a room, everybody would get three stickers, right? And or whatever, ten stickers and 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 would be able to to give two or three of these stickers. To each, to each option for the different. Categories of 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 making that decision, right? And and maybe we even have a waiting is short-term more important for us, short-term availability more important for us than. Then um than the monetary part, or is the monetary part more important to us? Based on what we think the voter wants to do. And by weighing them against a decision matrix, yeah, a decision matrix, basically. Set it up as a decision matrix. And um maybe Underwood can help us with that, set it up like that and and maybe even pre-classify each each option. Um, based on on some base criteria, which we can maybe talk about a couple minutes here quick, what these criteria should be. And then we can still have a discussion. Do we want to weigh weight any 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 of those heavier than the other ones? And then we're gonna get a pretty clear answer. What's gonna, what's gonna work, what doesn't work?
Yeah, I I think what I'd like to see. Is um, I definitely want to see what the, just the operational costs are broken out separately. And then I like this graph, this chart, yes, one, I think that that kind of says everything we need to 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 know. Um, but I think the one thing, if it's possible to add on here somewhere on each one of these um alternatives. Is like, what's the value in million gallons per day? Cause John's got a good point that. You know, Mitchell, Mitchell Woods is very expensive and it only gives us a little bit of water versus. You know, Penachuck and Manchester connection. Cost per gallon is a lot less money. And it gives us a lot more water. Um, but the cost itself is expensive, right? The 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 capital cost, so. It's it's kind of hard to um. I think, I think I would, you know, you gotta kind of factor all of these things in, cause again, if you're talking about. If you want something immediate, well, yeah, it would probably be easier to do Mitchell Woods, but that's only gonna give us a tiny bit. Of extra water towards our goal. But we can get it done probably in a short order, you know? Um, and we've got, you know, we've got some deficits here. To some extent that we need to meet in the short run. Um, I mean, we can continue to pay for the. Emergency connection, the retail value connection at that we have right now at Penachuck. If we need to make up water. But I I think if 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 you can revise this report to add maybe a third bar to each one of these options to have that O and M cost itself. You know, and um. And then also. Somewhere on, maybe at the bottom of each of these graphs, just have a a line that has. The million gallons per day that we're talking about that it would add. Then I think from there, we could probably start looking at. Taking action on some of these items and maybe like looking at a decision matrix like Wolf was talking about. Um, I don't know. Do you want to talk more about that, Wolf, about? What these different decision matrix items would be? Or you want to leave that for another meeting? Maybe, I mean, it's already eight o'clock, so.
Um, and it might be off, I might be off track too with the other commissioners. I don't know, uh, what what, you know, what what John and Paul have to say. I just. I I kind of would like to branch a little bit more into a a a a more tangible course forward instead of. Investigating more and more different options and and still not really, you know, making any progress.
I think it's a good idea, Wolf. I mean, I, I think it's probably something that. We might come prepared uh to another meeting with some ideas about. We can. You know, banter about a few things tonight, but um. To make a decision tree about this. Might require a little more thought than we have time for tonight.
Um, right.
And, you know, it's. Some of the questions that come up in my mind are. You know, is is the number that we're using for the Penachuck option? I like how. How much might we expect that to change with this? Forty thousand dollar study we have to do. And um. Yeah, I mean. That's the big, that's the big question in my mind, I think. I think it'd be good to know if we, if we were serious about going down the road. We're talking about which awards, which can do three hundred thousand. Seasonally. Which is when we need it. And we're talking about the recharge that they what two seventy? But has other benefits potentially for the treatment plant Will four and five?
Right.
Is the Manchester number, Keith, does that? Include solving the chlorine problem?
Yes, we add a chem feed building in that capital cost. To convert.
Convert it all to chlorine, okay.
Yeah. That's why the capital cost there is higher than the Penachuck one, but yeah.
So that's why if you think about a wholesale agreement with Penachuck or Manchester, say we got, I think it was a million gallons a day that you were estimating we would look for. If we did that, we would have to get that water essentially on an annual basis year round. Which would mean. We probably wouldn't need a lot of these other sources that we're considering, like.
Well, let me just, let me just correct you one there, make sure we're all thinking the same way, but the, we we actually said you should be targeting point five M G D, half a million gallons a day, except. Yeah, and uh. Yeah, I appreciate, but that's a, that's the max day number, right? So that's what you need in the summer. You don't have any problem on your average days.
Yeah. Right.
We we used seven hundred, we used a million gallons a day when we looked at Penachuck in Manchester, cause it gives you the buffer you need because. The point five assumes all your wells operating at a hundred percent. We're all learning to know that they don't. So we've, you know, if you need point five, let's go get a million. So, but that's all max day stuff. That's max day stuff. That's your, your peak uses in the summer.
I thought that was seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred gallons a minute.
Right. Is it a million gallons a day? So so that would be my, that was my point there. If we did a wholesale agreement. We, we'd have to buy in that amount of money, right? Whatever that is, thousands of dollars, millions of dollars. Um, we wouldn't want to just use that in the summer. For peak, we'd want to use that year round. And our other sources would be what we would shut down in in the non-summer periods.
You'd use, you'd want to use your lowest cost sources for sure, manage them properly, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I like the, you know, I love the work session idea or whatever format you want to use to Wolf's point and. And using some ranking criteria, we can help you with that. We already have some of that already in Appendix A as a starting point. There are other intangibles. We talked about whether or not, you know, you want to maintain your own wells, you want it to be groundwater or not surface water, you want to. Whatever other things are important to you, but we can, we can come up with something and and maybe in a work session format or however, you know, some other. Meeting start to see what ties in. I think the master plan will work for you for that. I mean, I, we can do some revisions and make some edits, but um. And what I normally have seen when we do that, um, as Wolf suggests, we would just take those notes. Or the the record of that meeting and sort of supplement it to the report and say, okay, the report identified all these projects. Here's the scenarios that the report recommended. Here's what this commissioner, this group uh felt was important and how we would like to go forward, cause I think the targets are there. We've identified the targets. But some of the things that. Uh, are less tangible, like groundwater sources versus surface water sources, like our sources versus purchasing outside. Those are things that. You guys as policymakers are gonna have to decide.
Yeah.
Well, and then we get the Wilson Hill thing that we're starting to do now. How lo- how far out is it before we know how viable that might be?
Yeah, that's gonna be a little longer. I mean, I think Jamie, you just. Yeah, that's gonna be a little longer, I mean, I think Jamie, you just authorized a contract for Jamie to do some the geophysics or at least some initial studies, I think it was just a.
I think just looking over maps, I don't think it was going out doing any boring thing, I don't think.
Yeah. So I think he's just going to look at the the opportunities, but he may not even give us an assessment of what the yield could be yet until he start drilling test wells. Yeah, so it may take a little longer.
Is that right, Ron? Do you remember the scope that we authorized Jamie? What, I don't think it was to actually do any borings out there or was?
It wasn't, it was it was all desktop work stuff, there could have been some what you call it when he he runs out the line and does the elect, the.
Geophysics.
Geophysics stuff that could, so that could have been in there as well, but it was, it was basically all desktop stuff.
Well, let the geophysics stuff, I think that when he did that for well nine, that's when it was very revealing, you know, so maybe we do authorize him to go to that next level if this first step works out for him, because when he showed us the geophysics on where he ended up putting well nine.
Right.
He said, this looks very, this looks very positive, it was, it was something that jumped out at him, so you know, if we get that same sense over here, Wilson Hill, then, you know, we might be in a better situation there. So. All right. I don't know, I guess to try to keep this moving along, I don't know, I don't, I think we, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if we have time, I don't think we have time to go into the corrosion control report right now, maybe we can put that off to the next meeting, if you guys feel the same way or.
That's fine.
That's good.
Yeah.
The pipes are gonna corrode with or not.
Do you want to do the same thing, Don? Do you want to do the same thing as any questions if we, as you're reviewing them? Get them to me, I get them to Keith and maybe it may help in the
Yeah. If we can address, you know, most of my questions, then it'd probably be easier to review things and I, it's not going to be as much, at least in my mind, I would also, I don't know how much the rest of the commissioners have reviewed these reports, they're they're pretty involved, I mean, I literally spent between Saturday and Sunday at least four hours, four and a half hours between the two reports reviewing them, so it's definitely, there's a lot of stuff in there. So I'll get those, I'll email this over to, I'll just copy Keith and Ron on this, and I don't know what the best way of responding to my my questions or comments or anything. I don't even mind if you just want to get on the phone and go through them. You know, one at a time.
Yeah, why don't you send them along, Don, and depending what they are, we'll figure out a good way to respond, it's not the first time we've had to address comments, but we'll make sure we address them and get it back to you and talk to you about them. It's just easier if you guys have comments, if you sort of all get them at the same time.
Yeah.
So that, you know how it is, so that we're not, then we can congregate them and just deal with them all at once.
Well, I'm not hearing any other comments, so.
Okay.
Are there? You got to review the report first.
I did take a look at the master plan, I did not get to look at the corrosion control report.
Right.
I do have one question, one quick question on the on the wholesale agreement, the first one for P F S on here says, I mean, the first one, five A says P F S treatment. Does that mean we're treating that water for P F S? Because it seems like it should be the other way around.
No, that is, I got to put a foot, I should probably put a footnote under that one, because that's under the assumption that you're accepting the level of treatment P, Pennachuck does.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
That's not us doing the treatment as well.
It wasn't, so I'll make a point to put a footnote there.
Right. So essentially, the the water is pretty much all Pennachuck, Manchester and Mitchell Woods all have P F S, but they are whoa, you know, single digits, barely detectable. So it is a little, it is a little confusing to see one that says P F S treatment and and one next to it from Manchester that says there's no P F S treatment. They're really, you know, we're really talking about all relatively single-digit P F S in all of the water. So it doesn't really matter to me if there's treatment or not, it's what the water we're getting from them is to begin with, you know?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, we should have absolute, you know, values for each options in front of us.
There's in there, yeah, there is a table with all the data.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
You mean, construction costs, you mean?
No, P F S levels.
P F S levels.
Yeah. Table in the report, table three.
If I'm not mistaken, I thought, was it Emery and Garrett that graphed Pennachuck's data?
Think they did.
Because it's it's kind of variable. I don't know that we ever graph Manchester's data. P F S results in their finished water, I don't remember.
If you look in the appendix of the report, I think it's in appendix C, there's a good discussion and correspondence between both Manchester, mostly in Pennachuck, but Pennachuck is pretty good detail on what's happening with with the P F S and how they're managing it, so there's some stuff there you might be interested in. Also, the other wholesale arrangements with their communities, Hudson, Milford, and then Hazard-Busher listed in there too, by comparison, what they currently have for wholesale arrangements with those communities.
That's in appendix C, you said?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. All right, so should we, I think we got to probably come back and revisit this. If if I guess if anybody else has any comments or anything on the questions. I mean, the simple thing I did is I just took the PDF file and I added these little sticky note comments in there wherever they had questions. So maybe if if you guys have any questions, if we want to circulate that over to Ron, and he can forward it over to Keith and then maybe we can kind of, if there are more than just mine, we can kind of pull that all together and make one more pass through this before a final draft is issued, maybe? Does that sound reasonable to you, Keith, or?
Oh, that's fine, absolutely, I do, I do, and maybe you want to wait on this, but do do you want us to talk to Pennachuck about getting a firmer quote to forest cost of service study, or do you want to wait and see?
I'd like to get a quote from them, if that's not a big deal to get, at least what, you know, to kind of determine what we need to pay. And then if there's a scope of work that they're going to give us on that, that tells us what they're going to give us for that. For that amount of money.
Yep. I will ask Dawn to do that.
Okay. So let's come back to this at the next meeting then. And hopefully, if we have a chance to get comments over to Ron, forward over to Keith. And if if it turns out that my comments are the most of them, then I don't mind doing something just offline directly with you, Keith, instead of having everybody else. Or maybe we have time to go through all of them at the next meeting, I don't know, you know, we can probably, it just both of these reports are pretty voluminous and to put them in the same meeting is it's a lot, so it's just the way it is, you know?
Yep, understood, no, that's either way, I'll follow your lead.
Okay.
See what they are and then see, see, see where to go from there, but I'll take a look at them once you send them over. And as far as putting off the corrosion control, I think that's fine, when, you know, when you get through it, you're, there's nothing earth shattering in there, there's some good recommendations, but you're not, it's it's nothing you have to act on immediately, so so putting it off is fine, we can do that next time or another meeting.
Yeah, I I think this master plan update is probably a little more time critical because we want to start the process of where we're going to get that extra half a million or what I think more like a million gallons a day extra that we need when you actually figure out, you know, what our wells are producing versus what they're approved for. It it doesn't seem we're at the approved withdrawal on any of our wells or really that close to the approval withdrawal. And obviously, we're finding out things that like well two, the approved, the pumping rate was decreasing the last couple of years. We thought it was a clogged screen, but obviously, it's a it's a a pump issue, so which is actually good news because that well hasn't been cleaned since two thousand and four, and it's actually in really good shape. That that's good news to me that it's a mechanical thing, you can fix a mechanical thing, you can't fix a chronic screen clogging problem, so like, I think that was a good, as as bad as it was to know that we had a bad pump that needs to be replaced at this time of the year, it's it's good news really in the long run, I think. So maybe we can get that flow back up to, what is it, it's approved for like fifteen hundred gallons a day or something?
Yeah, I I'm thinking we're going to get, I'm hoping when we get this thing back running, we're going to be twelve, twelve hundred gallons a minute.
Wow.
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay. All right, anybody have any other last questions or comments for for Underwood, I think, is that all you guys had, besides if we're going to put away the corrosion control report for another meeting?
That was it, that was it, and so the next meeting for us will be corrosion control and the rate, any final rate vote and decide how we want to do do the master plan at that meeting or work session, but I'll follow your lead, so, so we'll see you then, that's going to be third week in June, third week in June.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to doing a work session on the master plan.
It might be a good thing to do, we can just, you know, just focus on that, that's it, it's a big enough deal.
At least it focuses on that one item and gets all our attention and we can handle it in one night, move on and start making some decisions on pulling the plug, pulling the strings on some of these. Oh, yeah, all right, why don't you, maybe if you can get back to us with a cost of service proposal from Pennachuck too?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, any other questions, comments from anyone on that?
Also, thanks very much, Keith.
Yeah, thanks, guys, have good rest of your night, yep, see ya.
Thanks, bye. All right, so moving on, we already did the minute, so I guess we're at the Board of Commissioners' review of action items. So let's go and find those. Okay. All right, so action items, we're, we got one page, it's good. Number two, I think is a sort of a recurring thing, actually, was there a table in this that I saw?
There was a table included in for additional information for that.
Right. And that's right after the action items, is that right? Let me see here. Where is that table? It's on page like sixty-two and sixty-three of the PDF file.
Thank you.
And that's just kind of a summary of all of the different engineering tasks for Underwood and Emery and Garrett.
Just Underwood.
No, both of them.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
Yep, there's a sheet for each one of them.
Okay, yep. I didn't see that one.
So that kind of shows us what the original cost was and then what is the balance, is that what's remaining in the budget, basically?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So if you guys want to take a look at that at some point in time, if you have any questions on that, I don't necessarily have any questions. This is just something that was requested of Ron a few months ago or something, I think. All right, so we go back to so that's action item number two, I think that just needs to be left on as sort of a recurring item. Number twelve, capital reserve funds for well development can be used for engineering orders.
Did we already do this one?
I don't know, what was the result, do you remember?
I don't remember, I I I thought we.
This is one that Michelle, I think every meeting we realized that we need Michelle for that one. But she's gone at the time we review this.
It could be.
It was, I believe it was something that I had asked Carrie about to clarify the capital reserve, but I I thought I've already done it, but I I just don't recall, it seemed like it's already been done, but let me so obviously, I don't have an answer on that one for tonight.
I thought something was addressed, but then there was another question that was supposed to be followed up with Carrie or something, but I can't remember what it was. Maybe if you talk to her, it might jog her memory because she she might know because, you know, she's only dealing with a few things of M P D and not like a whole dozens of things on your part, so maybe follow up with her and ask her what the resolution of that was, if there was one. All right, so number thirteen, I think that's still ongoing, I don't know if there's been any further information on that.
No, it's still, she just gave me a little bit, it's still, it's still ongoing, so.
Is there a policy that we need at some point in time to be, is there like a deadline for that, or what is, what is that for, is that for our insurance or audit or something?
There's a couple of different things going on here, so it was recommending, recommended by the auditors. So we're trying to get that done, but it's also for the
Risk and Resilience.
Risk and Resilience. Basically, we're trying to build up the, a lot of these are going to end up in the emergency plan with appendix and and all of that, and we'll be able to put, pass this whole thing, and so most of them are created, it's, I have it on my desk, we're still reviewing and we'll get them back out, so that will soon as we can, we'll get that piece, I think Wolf was looking for the I T policy, so we'll get that out as soon as we can.
And that emergency plan, that's something D E S is requiring, right?
It was D E S and E P A. The part of it that they're looking at, it was the cyber cybersecurity piece.
Cybersecurity and D E S requires emergency plan for grants and loans.
Yeah, that that needs to be updated as well, so we're tackling all in one, one shot.
All right, anyone have any questions on that one, number thirteen? If not, then number nineteen, I think I was just asking about that earlier about graphing the P F O A, P F O S for Manchester Water Works, I I think that, I remember seeing it done, I just don't know if it's been updated for a few months or not. I thought he was actually graphing, I don't remember who was doing it, I I know we kind of, we kind of have Underwood and Emery both graphing our wells because Jamie does the individual graphs, whereas this last report that we just went over with with Underwood, they actually graphed the same information. So I think we're having it done by both firms, although I don't think Underwood is under a renewing contract to keep doing it, but but Emery and Garrett is. But I I think they're they're graphing, maybe instead of just P F O A and P F O S, I think they were, basically, this should probably just say all of P F S in general, because I think they were looking at other P F S compounds as well.
That's part of their, the groundwater, groundwater monitoring contract with them, that it's also our quarterly, it's anything that we sample for, it goes over to them.
But I think Keith borrowed the, just got the information from Jamie to put it into his report, I don't think he's actually, well, he's not doing any testing, but he's here or grab, I think he's using their graphs.
Yeah, okay.
If I'm saying that correctly.
Okay. Do we want to change, can we change number nineteen instead of just saying P F O A and P F O S, just to say all whatever available P F S compounds that that they are? Because I know he's doing that for for our wells, I think, right? And I thought I saw this for 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 Pennachuck anyways, I don't think I remember seeing Manchester Water Works, but so if you want to do that, Amanda, if no one else objects, we want to just look at P F S compounds for Manchester Water Works system that feeds M B D connection. And is this just Manchester, though, this isn't Pennachuck, right? Number nineteen is just referring to Manchester in here?
Yeah, that's what it looks like. Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Okay. Um, number twenty-three, the results of PFAS sample points, I think you actually included that in this report.
Yep.
All right, and that's a quarterly thing, so we'll keep that on there. Uh, Underwood's looking into a cost of service study. Obviously, they're still doing that. And number twenty-nine, uh, the attendees of the salt mitigation webinar, to be sure if they would be comfortable with MBD promoting the webinar. I don't know if there's any update on that or not. I assume not. Is that something?
No, I mean, it's already posted on the website, so it's kind of. Mute point because it's right after the presentation, we put it up on the website.
All right, um. Well, if we're not gonna do anything with it, then we should get rid of it then. Right, so. Do we want to, after the fact, ask them if they're okay about it? I think that was what the question was really for, but um, I wasn't.
They attended a public meeting, so I guess I'm not really sure. Why would you have to get their consent if it's, you know, a public meeting that was recorded that's on our website?
Right.
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
Number twenty-nine.
The salt mitigation meeting.
Well, if if we're not gonna do it, let's just get it out of here, so we don't have to keep looking at it every month. I'm all for removing number twenty-nine at this point. If you guys are available or willing to um. Agree with that or not.
Do we want to make an action item, Don, to, by a certain date, do we have our first meeting? For the salt committee?
Yeah. Do we have a salt committee yet?
We have, it it's formed. It's just we haven't had a meeting.
Right.
So I've 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 emailed out to everybody. Everybody's willing to to be a part of it. Uh, the ones that we that we've contacted. Obviously, we didn't get the uh. DOT or um. Turnpikes to join. But we get some uh, DS, the local representation. So I can certainly. If we come up with it, when we'd like to have that meeting, we can, I got something to shoot for when we, when we. Have our first meeting, so.
Okay. What uh, when you thinking about? Like maybe September, something or um, is that too late?
I think we need to do something sooner than that.
Yeah, I don't know how much.
Especially if you want to get anything out.
Yeah.
I'm I'm wondering if we should want to do something in uh. August, maybe?
Yeah, I'd be up for that.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we make, why don't we? Well, I didn't hear anybody else agree to remove twenty-nine, so I guess we'll leave it there. So um, if you want to add another one on, should it be the next, the next um, action item number? What do we have, thirty-five or what is it?
Yes, or thirty-six, I think we had one for uh. We talked about for adding the mailer.
Okay. So you got that one, Amanda? So we're gonna try to schedule a salt um. Committee meeting. For August.
Yep.
So maybe Ron, would you want to reach out and see if people are available or something, or how do you um? How do you want to do that?
Shoot on a doodle pole.
Yeah, those work.
They do, but.
All right.
In for August, and we'll, we'll figure out a date from there.
Okay, um, so number twenty-three. Oh, we already did that one, right? I already went past these. What am I doing? We're on thirty, thirty-one?
Yes. We do have a response back on that. There was an email that was sent out a while ago.
Yeah. I don't remember what the conclusion was, but.
I just saw the email today, so it's probably something that we can um, get back out to everybody. Um, obviously, especially since Ron's doing the. Um, salt committee.
Okay. So if we do have that, then we can, we can remove number thirty-one and we just keep that um, email from Carrie. Available somewhere, so we can always pull it out later. Everybody agreed in number thirty-one can be crossed off, deleted.
Sure.
Hidden.
Yeah, we can get rid of it.
Okay, so thirty-three, revisit the discussion of the rate structure change via work session. So I think we can get rid of that one, because we had that. Everybody agree to that? Okay. If I hear nothing, I'm assuming you're in accordance with what I'm saying, okay? Just so everybody knows.
The last one, you heard nothing and you left it on there. What are you talking about? Changing the rules.
All right, um. So that just leaves number thirty-four. And I think that's done as well.
Yeah.
So this was all part of the rate, um, the rate increase that we're doing, and that's, that's a moot point at this point, because. We didn't, we didn't include anything with the town sewer bill, so.
I thought we said it wasn't necessary or something like that at the last meeting, didn't we?
Right. Well, it's good. At least some of these uh, action items are decreasing. I don't know if anybody has anything to add to this, and what, do we do anything tonight? That needed, needs to be added to this? You know, we talked about assault, assault mitigation meeting in in August. That's number thirty-six. I think you said it was added on, so. Anybody else have any other items here they want to add on? Do you want to do anything with the um? The um. Drawn a blank. What do we just review with Keith? The master plan update? I don't know. We need to put that on an action item, I think. I think we're just planning on coming back to that at the next meeting, basically, right? Yeah, so let's just make sure that that's an agenda item for the next meeting. Obviously, the corrosion report we should put on. As well, um.
And the decision criteria for. New water sources.
So for, for trying to select which, which alternative we want to move forward with.
I mean, if you wanted, you could. Put an action item on there for everybody to to think about criteria, but I mean, that's what the meetings are for too as well.
Right. I don't know. Do you want, we can, we can do that. If you want to make it an action item, at least that way we can, you know, be reminded of it if we. If it hangs up here, it'll be there to remind us of the meeting. All right. I think that's where all really the only things I had, um. Yeah, I was just gonna mention, I know um. Eileen Cabanel had retired. I was just wondering if MBD wants to send a letter. I'm kind of feeling like I'd like to thank the um. Town council and Eileen for being proactive and all of their battles and stuff, um, you know, against. St. Obane and and trying to do the right thing for the town and whatnot, um. But, you know, I'm not trying to create more work for everybody either. I can mention something like that if I go to meet with town with Jamie about the Brownfields thing, you know, I can. I can always just point that out verbally. So I just think that, I didn't know if everybody knew that, but Eileen's not, she retired. And I believe Paul McCallie is now the um. The um, town manager. So.
Do we know if Eileen left, you know, is she still in town?
She lives in Hampton, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah. I got her cell phone, I got her cell phone number if we ever need to reach her.
Yeah, you should be there, actually, please, if you don't mind, not that, okay, I didn't say that because you probably.
Oh, yeah, I can.
Yeah, yeah, well, privacy, you know, so it's not happening in the meeting.
Right, right. All right, um, so I guess that's it for action items. Does anybody else have anything to add on there?
I do think a little letter would would be appropriate for Eileen, um, you know, at least, uh, you know, I don't know how a staff experienced her, but I think. Uh, the last two years, she's been very approachable and supportive of of any of our, any of our needs, so.
Right. Actually, you know what? I I don't have a problem writing that. If you want to put that under my, um, put an action item for a letter to Eileen and the town council, I'll tell. I'll take charge of that. So I'll probably have, I'll, I'll, I'll try to have a draft for our next meeting for us to review. Or if earlier, maybe I'll just send it around or something.
Send it over, we'll review it.
Okay. So Ron, you were gonna follow up on that Brownfields letter with Paul to see if if he wants attendance. At the next June meeting, I believe.
I will. I'll follow up with Paul on that tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't mind going to that if they um, if they want somebody there, that's fine.
Okay. Sounds like they, if I need to find out if he, if he can do a room, uh, remote.
Remote, yeah.
Jamie to be there and and I can, I'll actually, I'll go with you as well.
Okay.
To the, to the meeting.
Okay. That's all I had for for um, action items. If there are no others, we can move on to um, old business. Everybody good with that? All right, anybody have any uh, old business to bring up?
I kind of have a suggestion. Shouldn't we merge those two agenda items? Because the task list is usually our old business, isn't it?
Well, actually, this is under old business, new business, number six here, so.
So to keep it all on the one page, we had to put those together.
No, but there, there might be other old business that we might want to just talk about. I I don't know, without having to put it on.
Okay.
Action items.
That's fine.
This maybe?
That's fine, moving on.
Okay. So any old business or new business?
So I actually, Don, if you, if you don't mind, I, I had sent an email out, um. She was a couple, couple weeks ago about setting up a uh. Open house for the state senators and and all of that. And we kind of missed the window. For the, for the hearing of those bills, but um. Still would like to do something anyways and maybe catch them before they vote. I don't think, but I don't believe that anything's been voted on.
Right.
Any preference? That's kind of where I want to go with it. Uh, I'm thinking on a Saturday. But it doesn't necessarily have to be. We can, if during the week or. Even a Sunday, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just kind of throwing it out there to the board to see what their, what their preference would be and, you know, obviously to to be able to attend as well, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't have a, I don't mind doing it, you know. I'm not sure, actually. It is a weekend in the summer, you know, so that was a little bit more uh, difficult to get everybody together and.
A weeknight?
I I'd be fine on a weeknight as well.
Okay.
Either one's fine by me.
Yeah.
Well, the number of doodle poles that I've done, I'm fine and can tell you that most people are um, like Wednesdays. Because it's right in the middle of the week, you're not ramping up and you're not ramping down, but it just seemed to be a popular day.
I'll promise that Mondays and Tuesdays and Thursdays are usually full with town meetings and stuff like that and and whatnot. Like.
And then Thursdays for town, town meetings.
Yeah, true.
Right, so Wednesday probably is more or less the. Most available date.
Like a late, late afternoon or early evening or something, you mean?
That's what I was, yeah, maybe get started three-thirty-ish, four o'clock and. Just leave it open. We can start at four, it doesn't matter to to. Do we want to shoot for the twenty-sixth?
For June?
Of May? Or?
Are you trying to kill me?
No, I'm not trying. It just comes natural.
Makes you not available that day.
First week in June?
I'm off most of that for the wedding.
Oh, that is true.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. This is gonna be um, it's gonna be hard.
Do we?
Uh, the next seven weekends, the next nine weekends, I have seven, something on seven of them.
So do we want to do a doodle pole? So I have a list of all, of a bunch of the the state senators. Um, our representatives, do we, do we want to send them a doodle pole, see when they can make it, or we just want to throw a date out?
Depends on what you guys want to do at the open house. I mean, if it's just setting the date and opening, opening the place up, then that's, that's easy. Um, if there's, if you wanted to do snacks or anything like that, we could probably figure that out too, but I don't think it needs to be an all-day affair anyways.
No, no.
Yeah, I would agree. But some. Some dips or something like that, or.
Nips, huh?
Dips and dips.
Freshments. Yeah, I mean. This is a pretty short thing, right? This is like an hour type of thing, hour and a half.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we want it, we want to kind of catch them before these bills go to vote. Is that really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be pretty soon, right?
Probably doodle pole off the senators would probably, the the schedule should be driven by them more than anything.
So.
Well, I'll include you guys, all the commissioners on the doodle pole as well and just see.
Yeah.
What we get for turnout.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because if no commissioners can show up, then it's probably not a good time to have everybody else there either, so.
Right.
Okay.
Well, is it more likely for us to, for for that to work out in the evening, or is there some, rather something we should do like during, during business hours? Like a, you know, like an eleven AM kind of thing with a quick lunch. You know, whatever, some, some cheese and crackers and stuff and then. Hot dogs. Dave's gonna cook up the hot dog.
Push the grill over there. I can do that.
Grill out there, right?
Yep.
It's probably not a bad idea, actually.
I think it sounds more like doing, doing it like eleven in the, in the morning is probably a better time to do it, because Senator, I don't know. Shame on me for not knowing, but senators are not doing any, any other jobs, right? That's an actual. Full-time thing, right?
No.
It's not.
I don't think so.
No. I don't, I don't think any of them are all full jobs.
So I'm gonna put out there eleven o'clock and three-thirty?
Sure.
Both of them, okay.
Yeah, sure.
All right, well, let's.
See what happens.
Or do you want to just do uh, do the, like, around the noon time and in, in, throw out on there as well as a, a lunch? You know, hot dogs, hamburgers type of thing and. So that, you know, maybe we. Spark their interest a little bit.
Yeah, a good idea.
It would probably help getting people to turn out.
So just uh, just eleven-thirty then?
True.
You're on your own on this one, pal.
Now, you say it all the time.
All right, um, so where, any other older new business?
Let's wrap this topic up.
Thanks for bringing it up, Ron.
Oh, you're welcome. I I I felt bad that we, it kind of got missed there. I didn't know where to. Where to find the, uh, some of the information.
I didn't either, to be honest. I actually Google it quicker, but but. I actually Google quicker, but, but anyway, we're digressing, so.
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, superintendent report?
Just a couple of things. We'll be doing our lead and copper sampling this week. We're dropping bottles off on Wednesday and be picking up on the twentieth. And then Dave and I are meeting with Margaret from Underwood on Wednesday. Let's go over the asset management piece that they're working on and I, I do plan on having a discussion with them as far as you know, well maintenance and all of that, so I want to get that in, like Donna, you and I talked about earlier, so.
Since you brought up lead, quick question. Does any, anyone know from the top of your head whether PFAS, I'm sorry, whether GAC is filtering lead as well?
No idea.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, I don't think it is.
I don't think so either.
I don't think so.
Well, we don't have copper pipes, so I mean, this is, it wouldn't.
Would be naturally occurring in the ground.
Lead and copper is in the, in the homes leaching.
That is.
We don't have lead and copper.
That's a good point.
Yeah, somebody just asked me and I didn't have the answer, so I figured I'm going to ask.
I go into the violation thing too. Because we had so well four R, when that one was punched, they they changed the requirements for sampling on there, and I missed one of the sampling rounds for radionuclides and VOCs are just part of the new well. So we have to put out a notification saying that when we missed that round, but Tricia Medor up at DES we did the first sampling round in quarter four, and we just did the another one in quarter two. And I'm waiting for the results to come back tomorrow morning, and then I have to send out a postcard that just basically says that we missed this sampling round. So this, these sampling requirements will start over, meaning that they needed to be done in four consecutive quarters. Now it just starts over. It starts at quarter two, three, four, and quarter one. But unfortunately, we have to put out a public notice letting out, know that I missed that, so that has to go up by the twentieth.
Okay. Do you know where we're at in the UCMR testing? Is that, is Underwood looking out for that for us, or?
No, we already did the UCMR testing. We're waiting for results. It's just for wells four and five, because we did the sampling event for wells, the rest of the wells, the last time. So we did sampling event one for some sampling event two for everything other than four and five, because they got shut down. And now we're just doing sampling event two for wells four and five. So we're all, we're all done.
Do you work with somebody at DES on that, or how, how do you know?
UCMR four isn't DES, it's EPA.
Right, so who, who tells you which wells need to be sampled for what? Do you get some correspondence, or is it up to you to have to look into it?
No, they have, they have a whole schedule up on the EPA website. I log in and call Pace Analytical out of Florida. They pull up the information and pull out the chain of custody and they test for whatever is listed.
Okay. All right, good. I didn't know that. That's helpful. Awesome. And then, so well, two. The, we're expecting that pump hopefully next week?
I'm hoping, yeah, but I'm hoping by worst case to be like the twenty-sixth. If it actually ships Wednesday. I'm thinking possibly the twenty-sixth or earlier, but.
Yeah. And well, if it ships the twenty-sixth, what are you saying? It's going to be shipping.
I'm sorry, if it ships, I said that backwards. If it ships the nineteenth, like it's supposed to.
Yeah.
We, I'm hoping we'll have it by the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, it'd be nice if it got installed before Memorial Day weekend, but on that note, I, Ron, you know, Ron and I have been talking a few times since Friday. And, you know, I did agree with them that if all of our wells, which I believe all of our wells that are left now that are in service are up and running. If they're not shutting down and the storage tank levels continue to hit lows, I know our Turkey Hill tank is at like half level and gaining right now, so we are losing water. We're, you know, we had low water alarms on both tanks over the weekend or something, I think, so. I don't want to wait on this one. I don't want to have to stop irrigation because of this, so if we got to open up that Penn and Chuck connection, if, if we keep hitting lower levels even tomorrow. I told Ron, I'm in favor of opening up the Penn and Chuck connection and taking as much water as we need. I want those tanks back full, so that we know that we got full tanks, because that's, that's the number one criteria to keep our tanks full. If we're on a progressively lower and lower levels in the tanks, that means we're just losing ground and we're going to end up running out of water and have to shut irrigation off and all that stuff again, so I don't want to be the only water district in the state that's you know, shutting off irrigation. So I'm, I'm all for opening up that Penn and Chuck connection and getting water as soon as we need it earlier than later. So I don't know if any of you guys have any opinions on that, but that was my opinion to Ron and I'm hoping that we can maintain without having to go into any kind of restriction at this point in time. So that's where I left it.
Yeah, I, actually, we, we left it, Dawn, that I think if, if whatever Penn and Chuck. So there's also, they were, they're also working on their tank at this point, so there could be some similar to last year that we wouldn't be able to get that. We're going to work with them as far as on what we can take and, you know, how much we can take it at certain times. I'll know more about that tomorrow. And, you know, at minimum, maybe, you know, if we can get a couple hundred gallons a minute or something like that. Maybe it's something we just put in the short term, just to turn on tomorrow and wind it down and be consistent. And, but like I said, I will know more tomorrow morning on what we can, we can actually get from them and, you know, the amounts, the volumes we can get from them.
Yeah. It's just that, you know, it, it's kind of seeming like deja vu all over again from last year, and I want to make sure we don't get into that situation, so. I think as much water as we can get from Penn and Chuck as early as we can to keep those tanks full is just going to help us in the long run. It, it's going to get drier and hotter as the, as the week goes on, so our demand's going to increase. I can guarantee that. So those are all factors with the restriction again on Penn and Chuck because of their tank. It's lining up for an issue if we don't keep ahead of it, so that's my only point, but. All right. Anything else? I don't have anything, questions from the press and public? I don't see any press or public left here anywhere, so that's it. Nobody else has any final questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The next meeting is on Monday, June twenty-first.
So moved.
All right. Motion to adjourn by Wolf, second by Paul. Do a roll call. Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
And Paul?
Vote I.
John? And myself, I as well, so that's four zero zero, no oppositions, no abstentions. The meeting is adjourned. Great. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks.